All right, welcome everybody to the regular Galt City Council meeting for February the 18th. Mr. Splendario, do we have anything to report from our closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Council convened in closed session to discuss one item. It was provided, it received information and provided direction to staff, but there's no reportable action.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll now call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone can please stand and join us for a silent prayer followed by a flag salute. All right, we'll now move on, move on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Anything from the council? No? Okay. If not, we'll move on to presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Next item up will be item H, Public Comment. Can you read our public comment statement, Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
And I would like to reiterate again of what Tina just stated in our, our public comment statement, that public comment in this point is for non-agenda items and we are not allowed to have dialogue with people at public comment during this portion, so we will hear your comments and then we will move on to agenda items. Just want to remind everybody that's how it works with general public comment. Do we have any this evening?
First one is Cody McMillan.
Come on up to the podium there, Cody, and state your name and you'll have five minutes, sir.
Thank you for all allowing me to be here, and thank you, Mayor Farmer and TJ with City Ordinance for reaching out to me, and I appreciate you guys, thank you. Recently, I got a warning in the mail to remove my trailer or I will get a fine. I thought at first I was, it was one of the neighbors that had reported me. After researching, I found that it was most of my neighbors in a lot of the town that were getting these notices. Our trailers have been here for years and years with no problems at all. Now, all of a sudden, when Galt is now becoming the next boom town, we're being attacked by the very people we pay taxes and keep employed. I'm all about getting rid of trailer trash and keeping the neighborhoods clean, but the city telling us what we can and can't have on our property is an infringement on our rights. We don't live in an HOA for this reason. There is a false claim saying trailers and boats devalue homes in the neighborhood, but this isn't true. Folsom, which is some of the highest housing prices around, lets you park your boat and RV in their driveway. This is a small town, we should respect people's property and belongings and not be a tyrant against what we work so hard for. I agree you should never be allowed to block a driveway due to safety concerns, but when it's not blocking the sidewalk or views, I think it should end there. When you travel down 4th Street, there are semis everywhere, that's not a problem. There's people living in, by Lower SAC in the creeks, and that's not a problem. There should be other priorities we should be focused on than coming after good law buying citizens that drive this town and pay their taxes. The house in my area was built in 1960 where RV access wasn't a big thing. There's 19 boats and trailers in my area alone. We just had a baby in November, and my wife had to cut her hours. She was working 40 hours, now she's down to 15. So before you guys tell me that I need to just put it into trailer storage, that isn't an option. We can't afford another $150 a month payment, and now I might have to tell my four-year-old daughter we might have to get rid of my trailer. In closing, I'm very proud of our little community. We've gotten over 300 signatures on the petition. I would like to see the ordinance change case by case instead of generalized ordinance. I'm not saying to allow trailers on the streets, but what I am asking is to allow us to have our own property remain on our property and not get vandalized in some storage somewhere. I was born and raised here in Galt, and Galt was supposed to stand for great American little town, and I'm not seeing that as much anymore.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Ken Lee.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ken Lee. I'd like to speak on the topic of senior driving in and, and around Galt. As a senior, it's getting more demanding to drive in this town. People are driving faster, trucks are getting longer, parking spaces are hard to see out of when you back out of a parking space because of the big bands and stuff. I'd like to bring up the alleyways such as the one between E and D Street bordering Galt Senior Apartments. There are city signs denoting no parking in the alley. Our apartment complex of 70 vehicles need an unobstructed two-way traffic down the alley, so we don't have to stop in mid-travel, wait for the opposite vehicle traffic to pass, and it should be free-flowing for our personal safety. Every additional minute that we wait, things can go wrong. It can cause an accident, back up the traffic. Cars coming out of our complex, which is heavy traffic road, get backed up and the gate could close and crush the car. It also poses a threat of potential carjacking and panhandling while we're in the alley waiting. Also, I'd like to bring up Fifth Street between C and D Street. There's numerous vehicles that are parking diagonally in the spaces that they're supposed to be parked along the sidewalk. They're parking the opposite way of the traffic flow, creating the effect that it's a one-way street coming from C into Fifth. And so it's creating that effect. Many times, people are coming down and thinking it's a one-way street, and it's causing a potential for a head-on. I mean, I have to swerve out of the way sometimes. Community service officer said he's been out many times, had the cars towed, but one side of the street, they go right back to it, parking any way they want. The other side of the street, on the west side, they basically parked the right way now since they got tickets. So I'd like to see that taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Tony Salinas.
Galt Council, thank you for letting me come up and speak, and ladies and gentlemen of the council meeting. My name is Tony Salinas. I reside here in Galt, and I want to talk about the ordinance of not having, allow, or allowing trailers, boats, or vehicles to be parked in a driveway. Although I see the ordinance as, I get it, I understand the ordinance, and I understand its purpose, but I think in this case, that's something that's changed to where, in my opinion, it's, it is overreach in some cases, and that the ordinance needs to be either revised or just revoked, maybe. But I think there's a place for it, but it's just not reasonable right now. It's not a reasonable request that the city of Galt is, is making of many of the residents. I was given a notification a few months ago about my daughter's, my deceased daughter's car, which is in the, in the driveway. It's not a bad-looking car, it's just, it's parked in the driveway. It runs, and we were given a notice. I think there needs to be some responsibility on whoever is giving the notifications, a knock on the door. Give us a chance. Just don't mail a threatening notification and just blindside you. We're already dealing with enough, as a lot of people are, with raising costs and just other things in life that we have to deal with, and this is just what I feel is like an overreach. Cody said something about the city charging the, the ones they know they can get the charge from. It's just, it's overreach. Go after, yes, go after and try to correct those, the ISRs, they're, they're there. I took a drive around my block, just one block today. There's trailers, there's a dilapidated, rusted delivery van in the driveway. Yes, I get it. There's a place for this ordinance, but it needs to be reasonable, and I think that is something that, that needs to happen. I did look online, and I was interested to find out that this same ordinance is in almost every community. Some of those communities have rescinded and reversed that ordinance when the community banded together. So I know it's possible, but I don't think that's necessary. I think it needs to be a reasonable request from the city of Galt. I, I just think that it's, it's too much sometimes. And I was gonna be silent about it until I saw on social media that there's more and more folks for it, but there's some that are against it, too. And again, there's, I think there's a place for it, but it needs to be, I feel, in my, it needs to be reasonable. And maybe perhaps that goes with some sort of coaching. I don't know who this person is driving around, taking pictures of these vehicles. I think there needs to be some sort of coaching that goes along with that job. It's a necessary job, but I think it's something, something, it's like a velvet hammer in some cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas.
David Givens.
Good evening. My name is David Givens. I'm a resident and homeowner here in Galt. I'm also here to speak regarding tonight's hot topic, the boats and RVs in private driveways. I also recently received a notice from code enforcement regarding my boat being in my driveway. When I looked through the Galt Municipal Code, I found there's actually several separate codes pertaining to the boats and RVs being parked in driveways and in residential areas. Under the current city ordinances, they're prohibited generally from being parked in front driveways, but they're allowed to be in side yards and back as long as certain conditions are met. Question I have is, is why do we have these ordinances, and are they written in a way that best serves the citizens of Galt? I believe as a property owner, I should generally be able to use my property as I see fit, so long as my use doesn't cause harm or hazards to other people. Potential harm could present itself in a wide variety of ways, such as if my use lowers the property value of others, causes a disturbance, or creates a hazardous situation. In those types of situations, I believe the city has a right, and in fact a duty, to intervene by having ordinances that prohibit those types of uses. So why do we have the ordinance prohibiting boats and RVs from being parked in, in private driveways? I believe the intent with these ordinances were implemented was to prevent blight and maintain neighborhood aesthetics. The problem I have is that these ordinances do, as they're written simply, or just blanket prohibitions for both boats and RVs, they don't actually address any specific or even perceived problem. Boats and RVs are not inherently blightful, although they certainly can be if not maintained. We've all seen that. Some people might not like the look of a, or of a boat or an RV in a driveway, but that's just an opinion. And there are also other people such as myself who don't mind the, the look of it because it makes the neighborhood appear vibrant and filled with adventurous people. But again, that's my opinion. Either way, opinions alone should not be used to unnecessarily infringe upon our personal rights and liberties, especially considering there's no statistical evidence that indicates parking such vehicles in driveways is actually contributes to neighborhood decay. We understand the need to maintain a clean and orderly city, but the direct impact of these rules on responsible property owners is not only unfair, but it's also unsupported by data. My search so far has failed to produce any published scientific study that addresses this. There's articles from the National Association of Realtors that state studies have shown this to be true, but there's also articles from the National RV Manufacturing Association that states they're not true. There's no link in any of these articles that I can find that are, to the actual studies, so that you can look and see how the studies were conducted. Everything is just an opinion, and when you're talking about infringing upon somebody's civil liberties, opinions don't suffice. The city ordinances as written unduly punish us, the proud owners of RVs, boats, and trailers, who take care of our properties and contribute to the wellness of the communities. I recently started the online petition on change.org directed at requesting the council repeal and amend these ordinance to allow boats and RVs to be parked in private driveways, along with requirements that they be kept clean, maintained, and operable. As of 5:00 today, we have about 320 signatures. When the petition, while the petition has received a lot of support, as expected, there's been some pushback by those that want to maintain current, current ordinances. The vast majority of the reasons given has to do with aesthetics and a feeling that neighborhoods would suddenly look like the parking lot of Camping World if the ordinances were rescinded, and I'd like to briefly address some of that. As a property owner and resident myself, I'm also concerned with neighborhood aesthetics. However, I don't believe that there would be a huge influx of boats and RVs if the ordinance were amended for several reasons. One, most of the boats and RVs people currently have stored in storage facilities are simply too big. They're not going to fit in a residential driveway. But the ones that are small and will fit in your driveway, there's nothing, there's no reason they shouldn't be able to be there. I'm proposing, the changes I'm proposing also would not affect any existing laws preventing the long-term storage on the roadways, just talking about driveways. Second, the city of Sacramento, which is right up the street here, also, they allow boats in their driveways, and they're not being overrun with boats in all the neighborhoods if you drive around. Also, there's other ordinances and tools available for city leaders to prevent property owners from allowing their property to bring blight or hazards. For example, you can require that they be kept on an approved surface such as concrete or asphalt. You can, which would prevent people from parking them on the lawns. You can require that they be maintained in a clean, operable condition, free of trash and debris. You can address all of those blight things without having a blanket prohibition to them. Also, there's already existing ordinance to address people that are living in RVs within the city limits. That's a totally separate section. That was one of the concerns that people had, though. Each of these requirements addresses a specific problem, though it's not just these blanket prohibitions. Residents violating any of the new requirements would still be held to the same administrative actions and enforcement as those violating the current laws. Just because a law's been on the books for years or even decades does not mean that it's a good law or it's even necessary or just. I strongly believe these laws should be repealed and replaced with current, thoughtfully crafted laws that protect both the property rights of the citizens and the aesthetics of the cities. Not advocating for parking anarchy, one thing I can guarantee is the sky's not going to fall if we amend these, these ordinances. Simply asking for a common sense approach takes my rights as a property owner seriously while still addressing the concerns of other residents, keeping in mind that the personal preferences should not be sufficient to infringe upon the rights of another. I might not like the look of my neighbor's rock in their yard or the color of the, the paint on their tram. That doesn't mean that the city should outlaw those things based on my taste or preferences. I'm requesting the city council take the necessary steps to initiate these changes, and I would also encourage everyone, whether you agree or disagree with my position, to publicly state any specific concerns you may have, so that they can be addressed and included in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Efren Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Efren Junior Gonzalez. I also live in the city of Galt, lived here for the past 20 years. I recently bought a home, and I'm here for the same reason as many people are here for, for the RV parking and stuff on the driveway. Except, my case is a little bit different. I was actually tagged for my work truck being parked on my RV space. I do have an RV space that's cemented all the way to the back of my home. When I contacted Louis Fedora, he told me that I could, I couldn't have it there because it's considered a commercial vehicle. I asked him if I could park it in the back, you know, out of, out of sight. You know, my driveway's pretty long. I got probably a four-foot between me and the sidewalk from the front of my truck once parked in my driveway. I was told I cannot have it there, and that I have to find somewhere else to put it. The problem with that is I'm a traveling mechanic, so all my tools, excuse me, all my tools are inside this vehicle. I get called in dispatch, you know, anywhere from Northern California, Nevada, on any given day. And so I have to have the vehicle available to me. It is part of my job, and I don't know how to go about this. So I decided to join, you know, it's an extension as, like he said, it should be taken as a per, you know, person basis, per case basis. I'm just reaching out here to see if I can get any help with that, because I don't know what else to do. I can't put it in a storage place because they don't really offer any security at those storage places. You know, my whole livelihood is in this vehicle. You know, I make the money to pay my mortgage and to feed my family, working out of this vehicle. And so I just feel like my hands are tied and I don't know what to do. So, other than that, I mean, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, could you give this gentleman your card so we can look into this particular incident? I'd like to understand more about that. You have a next comment, Tina?
David Darchuk.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm just more or less tailgating on the same thing, the same topic these other folks are talking about with the, the parking. Got a notice. Reading the notice, it says, let me know what I'm talking about. The code describes it as unlawful public nuisance, and I'm thinking to myself, on public nuisance? So I looked up the definition. This little eight-foot trailer isn't causing any pollution, any noise disruption, isn't infringing on anyone's health or safety. I have more than ample room in the driveway. In fact, I have two driveways, like most folks in here probably do. One of the reasons I bought the home to begin with was the second driveway, thinking, oh, that's nice. I can put my trailer there. I could put my boat there. I could put a third car if needed there. Going along with everybody else, perhaps, they're all registered. I actually have two trailers, two cars. They're all operable. They're all registered. I'm not sure, I, I'm not aware of the city ordinance on parking them in the street, but I guess I could. They're all registered. I paid taxes for them to be on public streets. I think these, just like everyone else in here probably, maybe there's some that disagree, but something needs to be done about it. Something more defined, something given definition to the problem that says this or that. I mean, this, the examples I've seen, and I've driven around town quite a bit looking, I didn't see any blight, I didn't see any wrecks, I didn't see any junk sitting there. I saw people with nice motorhomes, nice boats, gentlemen with the work trucks, I don't know. My neighbor across the street parked his work truck in his driveway for years, and I couldn't count the times he had it burglarized, all his tools, every time. But where, what, I live on a fixed income. I don't know about everybody else's. It's sell the trailers, that's all. I can't afford to put them in storage. I can't afford to put them in RV stuff. That's what I have a yard for. I have space in the back. No, I don't have space in the back. In the back, I, I put a pool in. Space in the back, I have my animal runs. Space in the back, my wife has her gardens. That's what my backyard's for. I didn't buy the house to have space for a trailer that I couldn't put in my second driveway, or my first one for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
No more on this topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Araya Centuram, City Manager, and I want to thank the mayor for starting the discussion off with the information that we are not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. And I know typically we wait till the end of council meetings for council to direct staff on what to bring back, to council put on the agenda so there can be a discussion. I would recommend that we are directed, really at this time, to bring this item back as an agenda item so that we can have a discussion on it.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Maybe a presentation about code enforcement in general, so the whole topic, we can just go and then allow the count, the public to come back on an agendized item, and there can be comments again by more people, and then we can talk about it and all that. That'd be great. Would that be okay with the council? Okay. So sometime in March?
Yeah, I think we could shoot for the second meeting in March, but we'll let you know if we're gonna hit that or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to the next item, item I, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. The first item is gonna be, well, actually, so we should do reports by the regular reporting we do, and then I can go on to item one, which is the new mayor's, because we still have to do the regular reporting.
Yeah, you could do it, you could still go down the line like we normally do, and then they can also insert that, or you could go around the line, and then you can double back whatever you want to do.
Yeah, why don't we just, why don't we just consolidate it? So if you were someone who participated in the League of California New Mayors, please state that within your reporting, so we'll start with Mr. Pratton.
Yes, I did attend the Mayor's Council Members, Mayor's and Council Members Academy. I went to the one in Southern California on January 29th. And so you're wanting me to, Mayor, you want me to go on with that?
Yeah, please.
Go into detail, okay. So, in attending that, we had a number of different topics that we covered. Most of the meetings were an hour to an hour and a half long. Some of them would be, let's see, harassment prevention training and supervisors and officials. Your call, Cal Cities and How to Use It, that was a, a session on League of California Cities is, and that's who put this, this on. And so they went into what it is they do for us and what we can do for them. Social media, digital communications, and civic engagement, that was interesting. League of Powers and Obligations, Open Government and Conflict of Interests, that was a good one. Along with some of these meetings, we, during our lunch breaks, so the event was three days long, and during the lunch breaks, I thought were very productive also, because the first day we had, we had, we separated everybody into districts. So you were in, seated at tables with other districts, other people within your district, so Northern California. The second day, they separated by size of the city, so that was pretty interesting, too, the folks at my table. I learned a lot about people that were involved in districting and were not involved in districting, that were, that were the same size as us, and some of the different topics and stuff that we discussed, I think were very interesting and helpful. There are a lot of new timers there, but there are a lot of old timers there, too. There are a lot of folks that go there just to, you know, to, for the social peace and to, to meet up with other mayors and council members and see what the new topics are. I, I think the one, you know, on the second day, at the end of the second day, they went into the financial responsibilities of the city revenues. It was a two-part workshop. First day, I was bored to death. I thought I was gonna fall asleep. It was, you know, very, very basic stuff, because there's a lot of people that have never been involved in these types of things and have no financial background. So I started out thinking, you know, I need to leave this meeting. But it went on, and pretty soon it was over my head. So it was, it went from zero to 100. It was, it was very, very enlightening. So for me, it was very productive and got a lot out of it. So beyond that, last meeting, I forgot to let everybody know that I had attended back on January 8th. I went to the State of, State of Public Safety address that was put on by the Sacramento District Attorney, Tian Ho, and it was very informative. I don't know if anybody else from the city attended, nobody from the police or anything. So it was actually, it was very good. I was, I was impressed with it. I have some brochures and stuff on if anybody wants to see who was there and, and what the topics were. But, but Pat Hume gave a great speech, and some of the things that our Sacramento County District Attorney has done is... done is pretty amazing. So there was a lot of things that I wasn't aware of. So I would encourage anybody who's invited that next year to take the time and go and see that. Another meeting that I attended was the CAST meeting. Mayor and I were both there, along with City Manager, and then we had the superintendents from both schools. We had representation from our, from our Police Department, and there were two members from each of the, each of the school districts. It was very informative. It's been a while since I've been to one of those, and we've got some great superintendents in this town, and there was a lot of, a lot of conversation about a lot of different things. I think the one that was discussed the most was the preparativeness of both the schools and the cities. And I think it was a great meeting, because even though the city has something, our Police Department does have that put together. The schools are working on those. We have a new superintendent at the high school. She wasn't quite up to speed on some of those things and wanted to, you know, plug in with what the city was doing. So I think it was a great opportunity for those discussions and to, and to further that piece of it. It was very important. Not going to go any other detail of, Mayor, if you've got something you want to speak on that. But that's all I got for committees.
All right. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Sandu?
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Reed?
Good evening. The only thing that I've attended since is the same thing as Mr. Pratton, the Mayor's and Council Members Academy. Ours, mine was, I attended with Councilmember Rodriguez, was June, January 22nd, 23rd, and 24th in Sacramento. And it gave us the ability, one, to get our required harassment and ethics training that we have to get every year. That was nice and very informative. And then it covered a lot of other things that Matt already went over, because it was the same, same thing that me, or that us and Matt went to, just in two different locations. But the thing that really stood out to me was the ability for us to do that networking that Matt was talking about, right? You're talking to people in the area, right, and you're getting their, you're bouncing things off of them, because it was, just like Matt says, a lot of the big conversation was about the districting, right? What do you, have you done the districting yet? We found several of them that haven't done that yet, and we're like, well, it's coming. So get ready for it. And we got to have those conversations, and some of them, you know, and some of them that had recently went through it. What did you, what did you, what stood out to you? What, you know, what were some of the problems that you had? Did you go with the 4-1 or the 5-0, you know, those kind of conversations? And there was, and it was a lot of different. It was all over the place when it came to the feedback from them. So, which was interesting, because it wasn't all, everybody's doing the same thing all the time. And then a couple of the other things that were, that were presented there were, there was a presentation on land use planning, and then a two-part segment was on fiscal responsibility. So those are all great things for us to know as the City Council, because it's things that affect us directly. Other than that, I haven't attended any other of the committee meetings yet.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Although I know I'm legally obligated to report on the same event that we went to, I could almost just say ditto. I had, one thing that I actually appreciated about this new council member meeting that we went to was meeting a lot of city managers. I was surprised at how many city managers actually attended and was a little offended that ours didn't come with us. But, so there was a lot of good insight from listening to other city managers, managers, kind of eavesdropping at these luncheons is what I really liked. Listening to the city managers helping their green council members and giving them advice and telling them who to go talk to. So I just kind of followed around and did a lot of listening. The meetings that were held, the teaching moments as far as the fiscal responsibility of the social media, those are all really good. And I was like Matt the first meeting. I was like, okay, I got this. Okay, go on, go on. And then did the exact same thing and went, oh, wait, I missed the bridge somewhere. I really got to listen. So that was very informative, and I was really appreciative that I was able to attend. I, unlike you guys, I've already had two committee meetings. CACOG held a new member orientation, and that was, I probably learned more in that than I did the three days at Cal Cities, to be honest with you. And it was like drinking from a fire hose. There was a lot of information. I was a little overwhelmed. But the one thing I did learn was that not only do I have to attend, or not have to get to, attend this monthly CACOG meeting, but that we all are on committees, and there's another monthly meeting for that committee as well. So I have been placed on the Policy and Innovation Committee, and so we, I also had that meeting since then. And that was very interesting, because we have a direct line to two of the lobbyists out in DC. And so right before that, coming down from the federal government, their transportation funding is going to be different. Their focus on how they're handing that out is going to be different. So that was very interesting to hear the perspectives. What they are focusing on is rural areas, but they're going to base the funding on birth rates and marriage rates, which is a little different. So looking, so entities are going to start really looking heavily into those rates to see where we can, what numbers we can win at. One of the other concerns right now, for those of us, especially up here in Northern California, is it's a great thing that the state of California is getting the Olympics, but they need roads for all those people. And obviously, the other larger transit circulation. So when we're going out for money for transit, for, not for transit, but for roads and those kind of things, we need to be very particular and very persuasive in our argument, because right now, Southern California is getting the look, because they have people coming in, and California's got to look good. So that's at both the federal and that, the state level. So again, that drinking from the fire hose, still trying to process some of it, and have another meeting Thursday at CACOG, so.
All right. Thank you, Bonnie. Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I think you might have mentioned it, but when I was, when I went to that League of Cities, I guess seven years ago now, time flies. But it's, you know, you're taking in a lot. It's a lot to absorb, right? But I tell you what, if you have a chance to, and I don't know if those programs are still open, or you can take some online or whatever, but the social media one is eye-opening. I mean, you have no idea, like, the dynamics between council member roles and interaction with social media. And I feel like, really, it's just like, we're barely keeping up with the times with, you know, all the things that are involved with that. It's the Wild West, really. So if you have a chance to see that training class on that, I mean, I'm sure it's changed in seven years. It's, it's really interesting. So for me, I had the CAST meetings, one thing I've attended, with Councilmember Pratton. So for CAST, for those of you in the audience, CAST is Cities and Schools Together. So we have two council members. We have both superintendents from the school districts. We have a city manager there. The chief is usually there, except we have the captain filling in for him. And then we have two elected members from both the elementary and the high school board. And the purpose of it is to, you know, coordinate with how the city and the schools can work together. And not going to go into the nuts and bolts of it. We have a good conversation every time. We share a lot, the city manager shared a lot of development, talking, you know, sharing with the school district, you know, what developments are happening, which ones he foresees progressing, which ones he, you know, contrary to what people believe, you know, like, oh, we're going to have this many houses in this one. And so we're like, eh, we're probably more going to see like, maybe really this much in the next few years. It's not really going to be what people think. So, you know, there's a lot of good information that's shared with the schools, because that's important to them, because, you know, they like to anticipate enrollment numbers and how many families are going to be in these new homes, and what's that, how's that going to impact, and how are those new developments going to impact, you know, like Liberty Ranch subdivision, which is a large one, how's that going to impact, you know, the school and the traffic with the school and the drop-offs and all that. So there's a lot of things that we can coordinate with them. It was good. And then I always enjoy, we have a standing agenda item regarding safety, and so the chief usually will talk about school safety, and then we talk about SROs, and we also talk about, and this, this last time, we talked about some training that was being done. You know, for those of you who don't know, we, you know, we do do, PD is very active with doing, like, active shooter-type scenarios and stuff on schools, so we can be really prepared for those things happen in our community, God forbid. But, so we talked about safety, and, I mean, we talked about a lot, but those are the, those are the topics that I was most interested in. So it was a good meeting, and I always look forward to those. I think it's very important, and I'm glad to be on that still. So with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is going to be the consent calendar. Item J. So it is recommended that items one through three be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. And those items are: number one, receive and file the warrants for a period ending February the 6th of 2025, item two, the minutes of the special meeting from January the 28th, and the regular meeting of February 4th. And number three, the Wood Rogers Contract Amendment Number One for the Corp Yard Improvements, CIP 524F. Do I have anything from council? Any items that want to be pulled?
Can I just make a quick comment? Doesn't need to be pulled. I just wanted to thank staff for, looking over the warrants, I'm just proud that the city supports the small businesses in town. If you go through the warrants, there's a lot of small businesses that the city utilizes, and I think that's great. So I just...
Yeah, there's a lot of checks in there that are for local. I see that all the time. It's really good. Anything else from council?
No. Me, too. And it doesn't need to be pulled. I just, I know that, I always look at the warrants when they come out, and I always go directly to the staff and go, hey, what does this large sum of money go to? So the two largest ones that I pulled out were for $300 and something thousand dollars. And both of them were for Public Works. One of them was for the lift station, and I'm trying to pull up the email to see what the other one was for, just so that everybody knows that we are, you know, we are looking at these types of things, trying to figure out where their money is going. What was the other one I asked about, John?
One was for the Headworks project. The other one was for the Vintage Oaklift Station.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's that. And then I did have some questions about number three that I'd like to pull.
Okay. So you want to pull number three?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So Councilmember Reed is requesting you to pull item J3 for further discussion. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve item J1 and 2. Do I have a motion to approve those two items?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Rodriguez, seconded by the Vice Mayor. I have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Items one and two approved, 5-0. Moving on to item J3. Councilmember Reed?
So my question, I was just asking for just a quick rundown on why we're having the amendment to add the additional funds to the project, and how was that, one, how was that figured out, and two, why are we having to add the additional funds?
Yes. So this, the item for tonight is a First Amendment for Wood Rogers for, they're the design consultant for the Corp Yard project. Their contract originally was executed via the city manager, as our contract was under $70,000. So typically, when we award a contract at the city manager level, where we don't go to city council, there isn't, the contingency that we may have is within those approved limits. So a consultant contract has a maximum of $70,000. This agreement was for 68-4, so in essence, our contingency is $1,600. Anything then over that, we have to come to city council for approval. So that's why we're here tonight, is that amendment will bring the total value over $70,000. And why we're appropriating monies from Fund 11 is a portion of that project is attributable to growth. So Fund 11 was not programmed initially for this contract. It was all funded previously out of a measure Q. So that's why we're having to add funds to the project to allow us to utilize Fund 11 to cover that portion of this contract amendment.
Thank you.
So was this a change order, or did we run over on cost?
This is a design amendment. So it's a change order for our consultants on the design. There were several conflicts that were identified during construction that triggered the need for additional services from Wood Rogers. And again, the amount of those additional services exceeded what was left in the city manager's approval to execute.
And for the public that's wondering what this is, this is the renovation of the Corp Yard, which is the property on Amador by the Rover Trax, which encompasses parks and rec staff, storage of equipment, things like that. And that building has been there since like 1950-something, 40-something?
It's been there for a while.
Yeah, so we had to give it a facelift in a big way, and it was a long time coming. So, yeah, thank you for the information. Go ahead.
I do have, I have a, just a procedural question. It just seems like this could have been resolved with the contingency on the original contract. So I understand a contingency on the original contract would have forced us to make the, you know, it would have been before council to begin with. And I'm kind of thinking that sounds like it may have been a better thing. So what procedure, what's the proper procedure? No contracts that the city manager or staff has the financial, or, you know, stays within that financial threshold? None of those have contingencies?
I'll just say what, before the Director Griffin answers, typically with consulting contracts as opposed to public works contracts, we don't have contingencies built in. Usually there's discussion, either through an RFP process or whatever procurement process, on the estimated time, and then we come up with a not-tick seed, and usually staff builds in a little bit of cushion in the not-tick seed number, but it's not necessarily cushion, because they're billing on a time and materials basis. I don't know what happened here specifically, but I just wanted to provide that context, because usually, there's a little bit of, because, you know, you don't have scientific precision, so I'll let John take it there.
Yeah, and I would, I would just like to add that, generally, you're going to put contingency on all projects, and the intent is not to omit contingency to avoid coming to council. So I'm not sure if...
I wasn't intenuating that. I just realized, I mean, that would have been the reality for this, this one.
100%.
Yeah.
I actually don't mind it. I think, you know, it kind of maybe, kind of makes, sends a message that we need to kind of stay under a certain amount, you know? If we just automatically just throw a 10% contingency on everything, you know how it is nowadays with construction or whatever, no matter what it is. It's like, they know it's there, and they can just go ahead and find ways to eat into it. And so if they're kind of locked in, and it's like, well, if it goes over this mountain, it has to go to council, then it kind of makes a little bit of a firewall in some respects. I don't know. But I get what you mean about...
Well, it would have. If the original contract was only $50,000, and they needed to go up a contingency, or to continue this contract to $10,000, we wouldn't have seen it, because it would have stayed under that $70,000 threshold. So I don't, I mean, I don't mind that it's come back. I think it's a good thing that it does give some open eyes, you know, other eyes on this contract. I was just wondering what the procedure was if we don't, we don't do contingencies regularly. I work on contracts, so there are no contingencies at all. You better get your numbers right at the beginning, or that's it. Well, you can come back for amendment, which is what is happening, and the amendments, but they're really, really scrutinized. So I, and I appreciate, I did ask a lot of questions on this one, too. Poor John probably was running back and forth between the two of us, at least. I'm glad to see this moving forward. Obviously, that needed to be redone out there. But I did have a little concern about the two projects running sidelined, because they're hand-in-hand, or parallel, I guess, is what it was said. And I think that that's part of the problem, was that one project had a little bit more influence than was anticipated on the other project. But it's construction that happens, so I'm good with it.
Yeah, and the other thing, I believe all the regional contracts, sometimes the contingency is 5%, sometimes 10%. It depends upon the contract. And that's a good way to bring him back for the transparency for the public. And I know the staff doing a good job. They know where they're using for this money, but it's better, you know, sometimes bring back to the council for the transparency. Thank you.
Mr. Splendario, I mean...
Mr. Splendario, I mean, this is kind of in the realm of what we're talking about, but I just had a question for you. Remind me, we, it wasn't long ago, we, there was an request with the previous city manager to up the amount.
Yeah, 70,000.
And then we actually didn't go with that and we made them go lower.
I, I forget what the, I think it was 100,000.
Right.
And we ended up at 70.
Right. So they wanted it to go up to 100 and we were just like, no, we don't want, we want the council to see everything over. And that's, I remember. Okay. Just for the public just knowing. So, yeah. Okay. All right. Any more discussion on this item?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm looking for approval for item J3, which is the Wood Rogers contract amendment number one for the corp yard improvements. Do I have a motion to approve that item?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Reed. I will second it. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved five zero. We are moving on to item K now. Schedule matters, notice of public hearing, all the fun stuff. Item is required fourth public hearing on the draft council boundaries, uh, council district and boundary maps. My apologies. Mr. Splendario.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I will keep my introductory remarks brief just because we've, this is now our fourth public hearing on this, uh, evolving issue. This public hearing is going to, uh, consider some four draft maps. The demographers prepared along with the other maps that have been provided to date by community members. Um, the four draft maps that the council will be looking at tonight, two of them propose four districts, uh, two of them propose five districts. The four districts, just for the benefit of the public, that would assume four council members and then one at-large mayor. So what we're looking for is preferences for the council to give direction that staff can come back with the draft ordinance. Because after these districts are, uh, identified by the council, staff will prepare an ordinance that will, uh, update those districts that will get codified. And, uh, and then related to that direction from the council in terms of the sequencing of those for the 26 and 28 elections. So for example, if it's a five district map, you know, maybe the odds are in 26 and the evens are 28 and that sort of thing. And obviously, um, Liz from redistricting partners is here to help us with that as well. She also, I think, has the ability to do some live drawing as well. So you don't have to absolutely be stuck to the four that were part of the packet. Um, and, um, so you don't have to be stuck to those. But those were drafted in consideration of the kind of the, if you recall, she went around the horn from, on the dais and got different feedback from the council. So that, those were drawn with, with a view towards those considerations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Liz.
Actually, Mr. Splendario, before you go, Liz, just excuse me. Uh, so for the public, this is going to be a public hearing, so I have not opened the public hearing yet, but, um, this is a public hearing for the process of, uh, changing the city of Galt to a district election, um, uh, format. So, uh, we're going to hear from our, our person here that's going to go through, um, what is the fourth time we've gone through some stuff with some new stuff from being presented. And after we have this discussion, should anybody in the audience wish to speak on this particular item, I will open the public hearing and you may do so. You don't need to fill out a speaker card. You can just raise your hand. I will call on you. You'll come to the dais and you could speak. So, uh, if you wish to speak, that will, that will, uh, happen after I open the public hearing. So, Ms.
Okay. Um, hopefully you can hear me. Let me switch. So as Frank mentioned, this is the fourth meeting. This is arguably the most difficult meeting, um, because we do need to get to one or two maps that you feel comfortable bringing back at the next meeting to potentially vote on. Uh, so we will be covering, this presentation itself is going to be relatively short, just so we have time to discuss which maps you want. And then we will be able to do some live drawing so we can bring forward a final map at the next meeting. Um, like we have talked about in every meeting so far, these are the required redistricting criteria that we use throughout the state. Uh, and every map is going to have these criteria, it's a ranked list of criteria. So first and foremost, each, uh, district has to be relatively equal in population size. Then we need to make sure that it's contiguous. It needs to maintain communities of interest. Lines should be easy to identify. So if somebody's looking at the map for the first time, they should understand why a, uh, street or main thoroughfare is being used. And then keeping districts compact. So we're trying to shoot for those, uh, circles and squares and try to avoid funny looking shapes. Now, we will be getting into numbering and sequencing. Um, we're going to finalize that at the next meeting, but tonight I do want to introduce the idea of it. Um, so numbering and sequencing, um, currently, uh, it, we have it as the odd districts are up in 2026 and the evens are up in 2028. Um, and as you all know, the elections are staggered. So when your districted map goes into effect, you're going to go into effect in two waves. So obviously in 2026 is when it would first go into effect. That means three, if you pick a district or a map with five districts, that means three districts will go into effect and you will still have two at-large members. And then the map is in its final wave in 2028, when you or the city elects the final two. And then your city will be districted, um, forever at that point. But it's really that awkward, uh, in-between, uh, 2026 and 2028, when you have a sort of a hybrid of a at-large and districted, uh, city council. Um, now we've proposed that districts one, three, and five should go up in 2026. 2028 should have two and four, but you will be able to decide, um, at the next meeting, which districts will have those numbers. So you'll be able to renumber the districts. Um, you can choose the renumbering, uh, based on many factors. So obviously public input, uh, natural election cycles. So when you guys are up for election, um, and then areas of historically underrepresented areas on the city council, those are probably the most common, uh, ways city councils and other jurisdictions have done their numbering and sequencing. Now, um, we're going to discuss that more at the next meeting because you can consider incumbency. We're going to hold off on that discussion. Uh, we can't consider incumbency when we're drawing maps. So we're going to, um, hold off on that and then come back to numbering once you choose a map. We did receive an additional map from the public. Uh, so here is a public map number four. Um, it's a four districted map. Uh, this is well balanced. However, um, you'll notice that the highest that the Latino CVAP goes is about 41.7%. So we have definitely seen that higher in other maps. Now, we had six maps last time and we're getting an additional four this time. So we have a total of 10 maps, draft maps to look at. Uh, draft maps A, B, and C are all five districted maps. Uh, in addition to the new maps, which are A2 and C2, those are also five districted maps. Um, and they do incorporate a lot of what we talked about last time. So underpopulating growth areas, attempting to maintain elementary school areas as much as possible, um, keeping together neighborhoods as much as possible as well. Um, and then with C2, we do see a maximized, uh, Latino CVAP, um, created in the spirit of the Fair Maps Act. Uh, and again, we do have an additional two maps for the four districted maps. So in addition to D, E, and F, we also have D2 and E2, uh, which again attempt to do similar, um, things such as underpopulating areas with growth, attempting to keep together, uh, communities of interest, including school areas and neighborhoods. So this is map A. We saw this last time and I'm going to go into the new map, A2. So when we look at the total deviation, it's pretty high, but it's under that 10% total deviation that we're allowed to have. Um, and also we do maintain a Latino citizen voting age population level of over 51% in District 1. Uh, this is draft B. We looked at this last time and getting into draft C, again, we looked at this last time. This actually looks very similar to, um, A2 that we saw earlier. Um, and then C2, when we look at the total deviation, it's at 7.8%. And here's where we see a total, uh, Latino CVAP over 52.2%. Uh, so this one does maximize that. And then getting into the four districted ones, we looked at D last time, D2. This one again, trying to underpopulate areas of growth while maintaining school areas as much as possible. Uh, here we have a total deviation of 8.3% with a Latino CVAP in District 1 of just over 50%. Draft E, we looked at this last time. And then here's the, I believe, the last new one, so E2. And we have a total deviation here of 9.3%. Again, it's under that 10% threshold that we're allowed to have. And then here is draft F. When we go through all of the, uh, draft maps, so A, A2, B, C, they all kind of start to look the same. And that's because there are some census blocks, um, that we're not allowed to cut, um, that sort of dictate how things look, which is why I recommend we do do some live drawing tonight. Um, so hopefully you've had a chance to look over these maps prior, um, and you've had, uh, some time to consider which ones you like. We can pull those up and make changes to them tonight. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this is the fourth meeting. Um, the next one, I want to make sure that we can get you to a point where you feel comfortable voting on a map. So next steps, identifying the plans you like, uh, make changes. And then at the next meeting, we're going to bring forward those maps that we create tonight. So you'll have a chance to vote on them next time.
Liz, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
It's okay if I call you Liz, I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, for one, and maybe just me, but what's hard is the way the maps are made. All I can see is the colors, but I can't see the streets behind it. So I'm having to reference like my phone and look at the, and like zooming in and seeing what street is that? Because you can't see, they're so faint, you can't see, you can't look at a map and see a color and know what, where, what those neighborhoods are. Like, is that just me or is that?
You have to zoom in.
I'm, I'm zooming, I'm zooming in.
The URL.
Well, this is, but this is the, this is my, this is my staff report, so I should have it here.
There are URL links, um, and it is available on the website as well.
Right. But I'm being asked to vote on maps right now that are on a website and not on my staff report.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that I can't really tell very well the map. So I guess I can go to the website and pull it up, but it would have been nicer if they were in the staff report.
I'm also happy to bring them up as well and we can take a look at, if you, uh, request a specific map, I can pull it up and we can look at the, at a street level.
All right.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes.
Uh, are we at a point where we can make that decision if we're going to go four or five?
Well, I think we need to discuss that tonight. And maybe that's, maybe that's what we should discuss first before we start looking at, then we can just toss out certain apps, right? Yeah, that's a good point. So, uh, well, with that, I think I should open the public hearing because people might definitely want to weigh in on that. So, um, I can open the public hearing and we can continue our discussion at the council level, right? All right. I'm going to be opening the public hearing, so this will allow public comment. Should you wish to speak, you can raise your hand. I will call you up. So, public hearing, okay? They don't have to turn in a card though, but you have some?
And I do have some.
Okay. But if they didn't turn them, they can still speak, right? Yeah. Okay. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. So, um, you want to take a couple of comments and then have some talk and then go back or we just want to hear? I, I'd like to.
Let the talk and then we can.
Okay. Go ahead and, uh, let's, let's go through the speaker cards first.
Paul Salinas.
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council persons, and senior staff, I thank you for this opportunity. It's great for citizens to be able to express themselves as I heard today. And, uh, this is great. This is America. My name is again Paul Salinas. And quite frankly, I'll be very upfront, make it simple. I am for a mayor and for districts. And I also like to, uh, mention that, uh, some of the community members have actually put together a very similar, uh, map as, by coincidence, uh, as myself for, for districts and the mayor. And I may say also that, uh, these other individuals from the community, uh, put out three, uh, four, and three, six, which meant there's a lot of work. I only did one. And I have to compliment them because of the amount of time they had to put into it. The real reasons that I support, and, and I may add that, I'm only mentioning a few. I did provide you a document so that you could review. I have the pros and cons in reference to, uh, four districts and a mayor. And, um, I also made some recommendations to the council as to if they do select a four district, some of the things that should consider in reference to the changes in the, in the charter. Now, it, it's interesting that, um, that, uh, the whole process that, and again, I appreciate this, first of all, letting the public speak first before you start making decisions. Because as you heard from previous other individuals, you know, there are issues. And quite frankly, you're making history. And very important because this involves governance, which means this is where the buck stops, which is one of my points. The buck stops with one person. We are familiar with the system. When you look at the federal and state elections, we vote for a president, we vote for a governor. And the fact is, if you even look at your staff, there's always a senior person in, in charge. Someone has to take responsibility. Someone has to take the lead. But you, as a council, have the opportunity to make sure that there is a balance of power before these things happen. Because you can change the charter that dictates what the duties and responsibilities are for a mayor or a manager. So it really, really doesn't matter because the power is with the people anyway. If they don't like it, they have a right to replace you. And then that's what our elections are for. So at this point, that's all I have to say. One, one more point. This whole scenario would have been great for students in high school that are taking government or civics. I mean, this would be in a great opportunity for them to come up with maps, come up with ideas. I mean, these kids have all kinds of ideas and we can also learn from them. So again, I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Brosman.
As some of you are aware, I've previously turned a mapping towards a five district. And initially my, uh, I believe that that was the way to go. But one of the questions that I still don't understand is, okay, in odd years, even years, whatever way you guys pick it, um, there's going to be years that you need three candidates. there's gonna be years that you need three candidates. Those of us that have lived here in Galt know that some years, getting two candidates is difficult. So, I'm not sure how it handles if you don't have a candidate that's inside of a district. To me, because of that, I'm now leaning more towards a four district, being two, two on the east side, two on the west side, which is probably the biggest rivalry that I know that happens within this town. And then, a strong mayor following into the middle. The other side of that, though, is, as a strong mayor, said, "You guys aren't exactly paid very handsomely, so maybe we should look at the mayor's salary and increase it over double what you guys are doing, 'cause his time's gonna be more encompassing." Not saying that that will be very much money. But I wouldn't be very interested into, if there isn't a candidate in District 1, how to, how to, how do we come up with a candidate for District 1 when nobody comes out of the city? Who fits that role? I truly don't know, I haven't seen it. I brought it up in the past, and I've not really heard a reply. But right now, I'm leaning more towards four, being two districts on the east side, two districts on the west side. That will keep a balance of power going, and then, we have a strong mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Splendario, are we able to engage during the public?
Sorry, I had something in my throat. You can briefly respond or ask questions. Or, and if it's a question, legal question, I can try to answer it as well.
Okay, yeah, I would just like to, I just didn't know if we were gonna dialogue. So, to answer your question, Mr. Brosman, is, if we don't have a candidate that runs from a district, then when the other districts are elected, then those people will need to appoint someone to fill that seat. But the caveat is, the person they appoint has to be from that district. So, you would ask yourself, if nobody wanted to run from the district, then who is gonna want to raise their hand after the fact and ask to be appointed? And that, sir, is the fun of districting. Does that answer your question, Chris? Okay, so, Mr. Splendario, or maybe Liz, you can answer this. There is no other, the scenario with districting, whether it's 4, 2, or 4, 5, regardless, if no one runs from a district, there's no way to change how that seat is filled, other than, right?
Correct. Regardless of whether 4 or 5, you're gonna appoint from that district.
If no one runs.
Correct.
Okay. We have another speaker?
Yes, Harry Wendell?
Good evening, council members. This is, the subject has really brought to light some really amazing people from Galt, council members themselves, and our attorney. And I would like to suggest that Tim Reed's document, if that's not already in the record, I think it maybe should've been attached to one of the notes. But that is the side that says we should stay one district. And then, I think that Mr. Splendario has done a really good job of explaining what happens to you if you do, and the, and the legal consequences and the costs associated with that. And I think that the council members are using a lot of good common sense for that. So, opening with that, and just my theme is, you know, overreached, we hear a lot of that. And our problem that we have here is a bad law. And then, we have attorneys who are exploiting that law, so that's its own subject. So, I guess, the first thing is, no matter what we do, I'd like to say that we need to protect ourselves. And I think, because we have a good attorney on our side, then I think we're fortified there. But I will bring up, reading the law, we may want to look closely, have we, at each one of the points that we need to fulfill. And the only one, when I was out looking for things, I had a little bit of trouble finding the redistricting on the website. So, maybe that needs to be looked at. It's, it's under elections, and maybe a great big whatever. But my own assessment of it is, if somebody wants to take you back to court, it's kind of like, well, it's like your ex-wife, she might take you back to court. And it's no fun. So, I hope when the consultant does the live districting, maybe they could talk a little bit about how the blocks are formed. It should just be an easy explanation, because originally, when I started looking at it, I realized you can't have a line-by-line residence by residence, because you're not allowed to disclose what residence and what their, you know, what is their ethnicity and so forth. Also, when you read the law, they talk about representation. And if we've covered off representation, then they say, "Well, you represent the children. You represent people living in the houses." And so, it may be more than just the voters that you represent. And it's a, it's a reality, you know, and I, I think it's a good one. I don't know exactly what all of those would be, but that's what you guys are getting paid that huge salary for. Also, looking at the city of Elk Grove and what they did with their mapping, and to me, mapping is a lot about what the statistics come out of the maps. And they had more, they had more categories than we have. But back to Mr. Reed's document that he submitted, there was something that stood out to me, and that is that we actually are a slim minority of white in Galt. And I think the reason you don't see it on the statistics is because we've grouped, I think we've grouped Hawaiian Islands and indigenous Indians in that. And so, not that I think that it makes a big difference to me or the people of Galt, but again, you get into that overreached area, and I think the, one of the reasons this is so hard is that while the buck may stop there, it actually stops up in Sacramento. And so, that's what we're, we're dealing with. And then, the whole issue that was brought up about what do you do if you have four versus five? I don't know, maybe there is a tiebreaker problem there, we got a swing state. But I'd like to point out that Sacramento, you know, they've got two houses and a governor. We don't have two houses and a council member. The council members have to do the whole thing. You know, they're the House of Representatives, they're the Senate. And when you get into districting, I think that it's more important for districting when you have that structure. So, anyway, you guys are doing a fantastic job, and I, I commend my fellow citizens for the involvement that they have. So, that's all I have to, have to say, and I'm glad you guys are making the decision, it's a tough one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wendell. No more cards, okay. So, it was, the public hearing is still open, so should anybody want to speak, they're more than happy to do so. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, if someone wanted to speak a second time, they could still do that, right? It's the exception with this kind of?
No, public hearing, we still treat it like regular public comment in terms of the time limit.
Okay.
And for administrative decisions like this, you can keep it open. Just be mindful that, as the conversation develops, some people, sometimes it's easier and cleaner to have a ending and they go back to the council, but you can, you can keep it that way.
Yeah, well, this is kind of why, I mean, I know, we understand, we want to hear from the public before we, whatever, but I, I wish we would've had some dialogue about our thoughts, and then let the public weigh in about what they see us talking about. But now, they can't do that, because they've already spoken, so that's where we're at with that. Anyways, so, I mean, I guess right now, we're talking about a five versus a four type scenario. We've heard from the public, I think each of us have spoken in the past. I, I do want to comment on, I've noticed on the first two maps, A2 and C2, that, A2 being a little bit better than C2 on, on just the scenario where the population amount is, I know you can't have the populations differ a lot because of the rules, right? But we obviously are gonna have, see the most growth in, in district, in that, in those scenarios, only in those scenarios, in District 4 and 5. But 5, everybody looks at 5 because it's got Liberty Ranch in there. But 4 has the notch property, which is, is being developed as we speak. So, 4 and 5 should definitely, are gonna anticipate the most growth, and those are the ones that are gonna become lopsided the fastest. You're not gonna see hardly any growth in, in, in 1, I think, or even 2, I mean, any of the other ones, actually, that I can think of. So, it's mainly 4 and 5 that we're seeing the majority. So, I think in C2, you kind of have one of the other districts, you actually, in C2, you have District 1 as, as, as the, the second lowest population. So, to me, if you're gonna make a district that's anticipating growth be a lower number as much as possible so that it can absorb that growth, you have District 1, on C, on draft C2, you have District 1 at 5,006, that's the second lowest, and that district is not gonna grow whatsoever, there's no development happening in there at all. So, that would concern me, whereas, you know, I think we need to try to be cognizant of 4 and 5. I just wanted to state that. Also, and I know this is super complicated, I mean, I don't know how we're gonna figure this out, but the other thing I look at, and I'm only, and I'm only talking about the two so far, is with both of those, those are very similar, like, so A2 and C2 are very similar, just a couple little tweaks with, with up in the upper part, right? But what's interesting, if you look at District 4, for example, and I don't know if our council members have District 4 up.
On A2?
On, on C2. Well, it doesn't, they're both similar, it doesn't really matter, either one of them would work for my, for what the point I make. If you look at District 4, you have the area down to the south, which is the entire area south of the market. Okay, Cordosa, all that area down there. And then, and then on the north side of it, you have, basically have people up on the east side. These are two areas that couldn't be, couldn't be more different. They're completely opposite types of, the people that live in the neighborhoods are completely different, different, different socioeconomics, all of it, from below the market all the way up to the east side. And so, I just am concerned with that. In my opinion, the area below the market, so I'm talking about, you know, south, southeast of the market grounds, all that area in there, that has more, in, more in common with the meta-view area. So, like, the district should be like, more like at the bottom and cross over and then have meta-view. That's just my thought, I feel like, unless the goal is to mix, you know, very different neighborhoods together, I don't know.
I think, can we at least try to come to consensus whether we're doing four or five districts? Because what you're saying is great, but if we, depending, what if we go for four districts? That's gonna completely change that conversation.
Okay.
So, that's my opinion, anyway.
So, somebody want to jump in first?
Yeah, sure. As we mentioned, this is the fourth meeting. And still, my opinion, still, I'm leaning towards the four district. And I mentioned before, the reason was, is the fourth district, because this is a very small city. And this city is from long time, they were at large, the citizen fought to elect a council member. And I don't think so, no citizen, most of the citizen, they don't want to be district-wise, and most of the council member, they don't want him. What it was forced. And our responsibility to the taxpayers. So, that's why my opinion to lean towards making the district. And on the fourth district, at least, you can vote a one person from large. With that power, go back to the citizen. That was my reason. My other reason is, I believe that might be attorney, no. If we make a decision five in future, it's can very hard to go back to four. But if we make a decision four, I think later on, if there's something, we can change to five down the road. And then, also, mention like, elected mayor and appointed mayor. You know, the elected mayor is some citizen or something, this is, is power? I don't think so, any difference. Maybe a little bit difference between elected power and appointed power. The only power is elected mayor, that power go back to the citizen. Whole city, the citizen can vote and elect their mayor. And right now, appointed mayor, it depends upon the council. These council can make whoever they want be a mayor. And that's why I like to, if we have the opportunity, let's give that power back to the citizen. And then, also, look at our neighbors. Sacramento, they have elected mayor. Elk Grove, they have elected mayor. Stockton, they have elected mayor. Manteca have elected mayor. Lethrow have elected mayor. And I believe, these cities, I don't think so that much can be the difference. And there will be no significant cost to be as, if there is a four district and elected mayor. That's kind of my reason, my opinion, but it still will go, whatever my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Pratt?
To me?
Yeah.
Okay. First, I want to say, you know, some of the public's come up and patted us on the back for this, but I'd have to go the other way. I think the public, I've been very impressed with, with the folks in the public that have put a lot of effort into what they've taught us. Because, you know, I've had questions that I couldn't answer and had to, had to find out in order to give them that information. I've learned a lot from the public. So, for me, I'm glad you went first, because I wasn't sure where you were at on this. But for me, I'm hearing, I'm hearing this about elected mayor, but I'm still, I haven't, I'm not completely sold on the elected mayor. I'm still, I'm still leaning on appointed mayor for a couple of reasons. One, one, I think we are still a small town. I mean, the fact that the input that we've seen on this tells me that we are growing, and we do have more people involved. You know, years back, nobody would show up for these kinds of things, because they're just, you know, they put it all onto the council. So, I, I do believe we have more engagement as we grow, but I'm a little concerned with our size if, if we're, if we're going to the elected mayor, not that I don't trust the public, I don't trust the people running for mayor, possibly. So, what I'm saying is, yes, Councilman Sandu, I, I totally understand, Lodi, Stockton, all those towns have, have that process. But let's look at that process. Those, in those towns, sometimes their politics, that's the most controversial piece, is some of the mayors that they've had. I don't want one of those mayors here. It's hard enough to get people to run in this town. And it's, all we know, right, it is not easy to run for public office. It's a lot of work, and so, most people do not want to do it. So, even though I ran, I got on here somehow, by a straw, and I still think that, you know, it, it's hard to get people to run just for council. And to get them to run for mayor, it's gonna be even harder. And I think that narrows this down to, you know, folks possibly with ulterior motives and, and are concerned with power, so.
Mr. Pratt, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
So, I'm hearing two sides between you and the vice mayor at this point. Vice mayor made a point that he feels, well, I think it was, maybe it wasn't Paul, but it was Mr. Salinas. I forget who brought it up, but the concern is that you won't get enough people. If you have four districts, you're more likely to have a contested election in each district. At least a couple people from each district will run. Whereas, when you have five districts, the chances are, you're gonna have one or two uncontested districts. So, so, my question is, what are your thoughts about that?
Well... Um, well, I think it's, it's another good point, because if two people run for mayor, one of them's not going to get it. Now we've just possibly lost a good council person, so...
True. I just think, I'm just thinking, you know, playing devil's advocate, what, what's worth, what's worse, the concern with how the, the, the influence or the power of an elected mayor would have, is that worse, or is worse having uncontested districts? And having council members just walk on?
Let's talk before you start asking questions.
Yeah, I was just, yeah.
Jump in.
I was just trying to ask him.
Maybe all of our opinions is out there, maybe, maybe one, I, you know, anyway.
Yeah, I'd like to hear everybody's opinion. I'd like to have somebody else maybe sway me, I, I'm, I'm...
So, I, in the beginning, right, I said that I am in favor of five districts, because I've had several people from the community come and, and express their opinions to me about that. Um, my opinion hasn't changed for a couple of reasons. One, we're currently in a lawsuit right now because of the way that the district, or that not districts are run, right? And we have that potential, is if we don't go to a pure district system, that we can then be sued again, because we aren't, w- we could be outside of the CVRA, and us getting a four and one doesn't release us from the possibility of that happening. That's, that's number one. Number two, is if we go with just a four and one, you're now going to be voting on a mayor that could be great and could be the complete opposite of great. Right? If we go with the five and we elect a mayor, right, just like the council that's up here right now, right? You don't see one of the brand new council members being the mayor, right? We, we appointed, uh, Mayor Farmer as the mayor, because he is more experienced, and he has that experience of sitting on the council, and him and Vice Mayor Sandu are able to mentor the new council members and get them in a position to, maybe one day, they can be the mayor. Where if you vote for a mayor off of the street and you don't get a great candidate, there, I mean, there's that possibility that we could have a mayor sitting over there that is not great. And I'm not saying that all five of us are great, but there's, I think there's a better pro- potential to have a good mayor, if you take from a, a, an experienced council member and make them the mayor, instead of just electing someone off of the street that could possibly just want to be the mayor, because of title. And that's, uh, those are my two top concerns about why I'm favoring five over four and one.
So, I am, I too am in, in, um, in favor of the five districts, a lot of what both, Congressman, Congressman, there you go, Mr. Pratton and Mr. Reed have brought up, um, e- especially the non-experienced mayor. That is a very solid point. I would like to address, um, the question of what do you, what do you do if, um, someone doesn't run in a district? So I, I'm going to not answer that question, I'm going to throw another one back at you. What do you do if you have an elected mayor and no one runs? I would much rather fill and appoint the seat to one district than have to have four people sit here and appoint an elected mayor. That's a scarier issue for me. Um, I feel like when you have an elected mayor, uh, you're cannibalizing your districts. If you have two people or three people run for mayor and they all sit in one district and no one else runs for that district, you've cannibalized that district. Um, so that's a big factor for me. I, I've, I too have done a lot of studying, have done a lot of reading, asked, this was probably my number one question to ask at that Cal Cities event, um, both council members and, uh, city managers. And I cannot even recall anyone saying that for a city of our size that we should do an elected mayor. So, um, I'm, I'm also going, coming from my experience of being a news reporter and following cities and following elections, um, first of all, the cities around us that have elected mayors are, they're, they're not towns, they're cities, they're huge cities compared to us. But, if we're going to talk about experience, my experience, our neighbors to the north, Elk Grove, 170,000 people, their mayor, um, elections have been nasty. One of them divided that town. I had a reporter injured because they had to shut down a debate, um, because the city was so divided. That's the la- 170 people can absorb that and get over it. 25,000 people, if you divide our city, I watched it in Herald, they got divided, that's been about 12 years ago, they still are having issues. I, I just feel like, uh, we are already purposely dividing into districts. I don't think this is a competitive thing now with this, with districts, but if we have an elected mayor, it can divide the community. Um, but, if I had to stand behind the strongest argument to keep it, um, an appointed mayor, it would be Mr. Reed's argument of, that it's great to have someone who's experienced, who knows how staff works, who knows how, has at least an idea of how to manage, uh, finances and, and has been through at least a year, at least a year, of learning the ropes of how, how a city can. And, and let's, let's be frank about this. What does it take, not to disregard any of our skills or anything, but what does it take to be, to be elected in this, in this country? A registered voter and 18. And if we happen to get an 18-year-old who runs for mayor and has all of his friends and everyone behind him, you have an 18-year-old mayor. Now, Don Nativoli was awesome, and I'm not disregarding what he did back in the day, but I think that was, um, a, a little small-town miracle and not going to be the normal experience that we have. So, that's my two cents, um, definitely think that we need to stay with five districts.
I have one more thing. And, I think on the flip side, you know, we, we talked about, you know, what if we don't get someone and someone doesn't want to run from the district? I think that we might have, and this is me hoping, right, that we would have the opposite problem. Right? When all three, well, all five of us ran, right? We went, we had to get people to vote from us from the entire city, right? And there's a lot of people that get put off by that. I walked a lot of miles and knocked on a lot of doors to get elected where I am now. And so, and if we do break it down to these districts, it may make it more appealing for some people to run for city council, because they don't have to put in hundreds of miles walking around, and they get to focus on their, on the district and meet more people and get i- engaged with more in that district. So it might, it might, it might not. It might make it so that we have more candidates.
I, I, sorry, I just remembered. Um, I, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with Councilmember Sandu. I, I think that if we started with five and as we grew, I think it would be much easier to go down, when we do that after the census, we have to do this every 10 years now, that when we go down, it would be easier to go down in district numbers and have an elected mayor, than it would be to start with an elected mayor and then tell people later, oh, no, no, you can't elect your mayor anymore. Um, so, i- if we're going to err on the side of caution, I would say that, starting with five districts as we grow, if we can see the need for an elected mayor, it would be much easier to make that transition, than it would be the opposite direction.
All good points, everybody makes really good points. Good points. From a new person, yeah. But I wanted to just share my thoughts a little bit real quick and then we can do it.
No, that's fine, just before we close.
I think everybody made good points. Um, I understand where the mayor's coming from, where, you know, I share some sentiment with the mayor and that I am concerned that, I think, my interest in the four district, well, cause I have interests of both. My interest in the four district is because I'm trying to just retain some semblance of an at-large person being elected, because I, I fear that, that, uh, you're going to have this divisiveness, um, you know, people are going to be like, you know, Councilman Farmer, you know, we really need something fixed over here at Community Park. Well, you know what? Hey, that's not my district, you need to go talk to Councilman Reed. Well, yeah, I would talk to him, but I don't like that guy, he's worthless. You know, not to pick on you, Tim, but just to say, I'm just giving you a hypothetical, because that could happen and then you could, so everybody, and, you know, or I'm up here and I'm arguing for Measure Q money in my district, because I think when you'd, I'm in your, arguing for Measure Q to stay in your district, and I think that stuff's going to happen no matter what, right? So, and, and it'll happen with, it would even happen with elected mayor. I'm just saying it's going to happen. But, I think that's, I'm just clinging to this idea of, well, we have an elected mayor, we at least have one person at large, like, at least people can change the mayor. Cause right now, the way it's set up, for those of you watching at home or in the audience, you know, if you have someone from District One, and someone gets elected for District One, and nobody likes the guy, but he got, maybe he was a walk-on because nobody ran against him, you have to wait four years to change your council member. Not like now, where you, every two years, you can change the makeup of the council. You gotta wait four years, you have zero say for four years, and that is a big pill to swallow, I just, that's the whole problem with districting, but, um, I mean, you got, you made great points. I, I think it was an interesting point you made about how it might encourage, it might encourage more people to run. I would hope that that's the case. But what I've seen at the school district side, it hasn't happened. We've had walk-ons. So I think, if I'm looking at what's happened so far, it's, it hasn't reflected that, but maybe will be different with council.
There's a lot of people that don't have kids, right, that aren't, aren't invested in the school districts as much as they are the way the rest of the city is ran.
True.
Well, the school districts, again, having covered that, at least the elementary school district, I think they held one or two elections over the last, the 20 years that I covered them, because I didn't have the interest. So I don't know that we can totally blame that on districts right now.
But they didn't even have an election because?
No, people walked on or they had to appoint.
Wow.
So, I mean, um, high school district, that happened several times where they just, only one person ran. Most of the time, it was the incumbent, so hopefully that means that the people were happy with them. Um, but they, there haven't been a lot of elections, so I'd, although I do think districting has affected tho- them, I don't, I, I don't think we can blame it completely on that.
Well, I would hope that the apathy from the public changes and people do want to become more involved, but, um, I think the points that were made by somebody, uh, the power concern, I, I do, I mean, I do understand the power concern where you have, you know, if you have elected mayor, you can have somebody come in and just throw a ton of money at it, and like, if somebody has big pockets or has big pockets backing him, he's going to win the mayorship. And then you have a guy who's a lot of control, um, even though there are going to be still one vote, but I understand the influence there. Also with the, uh, with the, um, elected mayor, I, I do, was thinking about your comment, Tim, and I did think about this already before you said it, but, that you might get somebody who run who's not experienced at all, they literally have never been on city council and they just run for mayor and they're the mayor. You know, you would hope that you would get somebody who's experienced that would do it, right? Like...
Or that want to do it for more than just the title.
Yeah. Like, for exa- like, and I'm not, I'm not just saying, like, so for example, let's say that, you know, hypothetically it was a four-one, and then we come to that. And then, you know, like, I ran for the mayorship, right? It's like, well, he's been on council, he's experienced. But the reality is, that's not going to be me. I'm not going to do that. So it's either going to be Councilmember Sandu, or it's going to be somebody new who's never been on council. So, so realistically, if we went to a four-one, the first at-large mayor in a four-one district for Galt, California, is either going to be him, or it's going to be somebody who's never been a council member, because it won't be me. I'm just stating that. And so, that's, that's a scary thing, that's, I mean, not scary that he, I'm just saying that's, that, so your, your hypothetical is like a 50/50. I mean, it's, it could be, or it could be 90 by 90%. So, it's, it's a very good point you make. Uh, so, we have four maps here, two of them are five district and fi- two of them are four district, right? I understand that. My problem is, I don't like the, I don't like the five, I don't like either one of the five maps, just because of the way they're, I don't know, there's...
What she, what she said was, if we decide four versus five, then we can do active drawing of maps, right?
Um, I mean, clearly, look, if, even if I was to dig my heels in and say that, you know, a four-one was, I'm going to die on that hill, we clearly have three council members that would be for five and, and two that would be for whatever, and I, I honestly, and I've said this before, this is too big of an issue to have a split decision, something like that. Um, so, and I'm really, I'm really not, I like them both, I like, they, they each have pros and cons, honestly, and I, but I just don't think that, you know, there's a reason why we're a five-person council and decisions are made. I mean, I think if we were just to, if we were just to draw a line in the sand right now and just say, let's have a vote, it's either going to come out three-two, or it's going to come out four-one, right? Let's just assume that, you know, Sandu, he's adamant about the four, and you guys stick with what you said, and I could go either way. So no matter what, the will of this council is for a five district. Am I wrong to assume that? Right? So that ma- it would make no sense for me to, to try to go against the grain and, and do that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with whatever the council wants to do as a whole. So unless you want to have some more deliberation and somebody wants to change their minds or want a different, look at different scenarios with the four map, or if you guys are pretty much drawing the line on five district, and the mayor, the vice mayor's on the four, then it really doesn't matter what I think. Right?
Of course, it always matters what you think.
Well, it really doesn't, though.
Of course it matters, but, but I would say, I was hoping, maybe somebody could change my mind, but they haven't. I, I, I agree, great points on both sides.
Well, another hypothetical is if, if, if Paul and I were lobbying hard for a four district and you said, you know what, I think I agree with you guys, I'm going to come aboard, you're still going to have a three-two split vote. I just don't think it's good for the city of Galt to have a three-two split vote on something that's actually historical, as somebody stated earlier, it's too big of a deal. It is too big.
I would hope that if, if there was a, a good enough argument to sway Mr. Pratton, that there, that that might have influence on, uh, so I, I think it's good, uh, we need to hear your opinion.
So let's, so let's do this. Let's do, I, this reminds me of our Measure Q meeting with the, uh, if any of you were there, that was a really good meeting. We had five people, all different opinions, and then we all came to front at the end. Start with you, Mr. Pratton. What is your big, what is your biggest hang-up with the four district? What is your, what is the, what is the most negative to you with, with the four district?
Just the concern, the concern of having a rotten mayor.
Okay. And what is, and what would be the one good thing you could point out about a four district?
For a four district?
If you had to find something that would be a positive.
Uh, positive, okay. Um, I don't know, I'm going to say positive. I'm going to say I heard some good points, but I'm not, none of them were positive to me, that's why...
Let me, let me be a little more straight. Do you think there's anything that anybody could say in here that's, that would, that you said you were hoping somebody could sway you, but...
I was hoping to hear something, but I haven't heard anything that...
I mean, we all made great points, but none of those points you felt could sway you to the four.
Correct.
Okay. There's that. So, Tim, um, you said you were, you were interested in both initially, but you've now kind of went to the five and lean, I mean, we've all kind of made points, we've all made some things. I mean, is there anything, I mean, is there anything that you think could sway you to?
No.
So, pretty much, you don't think there's anything I could tell you or that you could hear from the public?
No.
We're going to hear from the public in a minute before we do this, but, we're not going to, I just want to do this.
No, be- between the two things that I brought up, between the possibility of us still being able to be sued again, right? And we, we're already spending tens of thousands of dollars for the, just we make this one, uh, and we're not even going through with a full lawsuit. And then the second would be the mayorship that we talked about earlier. Those two together, they concern me a lot. And so I know if we went with five, then it would, it would, um, it wouldn't completely, you know, do away with all of the, the concerns, but I would be much more comfortable with it.
And Bonnie?
So I have a question for Mr. Splendario. Could you please explain, because it's my understanding that even if we go to the four-one, this, that is not a strong mayor. This is just someone that's elected different, and they do, they only have the same power as everybody else up here, correct?
Absolutely. The, we're, people use strong mayor colloquially. In City of Sacramento, City of LA, those are true strong mayors, where the mayor under their charter has extraordinary powers as defined. Uh, Galt, the mayor would not have extraordinary power. So if, to the extent we refer to as strong, um, not technically speaking, now, uh, I could say more, but I'll leave it there. Yeah, to answer your question.
And that's what I thought. So, um, I, I just want for everybody to understand that by having someone elected by, I, the only argument... by having someone elected by, I, the only argument that sticks to me, and you, so maybe you could push me. The only thing, the only argument that, that rings something to me is the opportunity every two years, if I'm assuming is what you mean for this mayor, to be able to basically shift what could be a, a split city council. So if you always have a 3-2, you could get rid of that mayor and possibly shift that council. That's the only thing.
I think we have to confirm with Mr. Splendario that is the mayor's term two or four years? Because if it is four years, like the rest of the council members, then you're not gonna be able to change the mayor every two years. It's gonna be every four years.
So the council can do two or four years?
Okay.
Okay. Which, which is fine. So that's the only argument, but you'd really have to expand on it because I, I, I do agree with Mr. Reed. Those are two huge hurdles to get over.
So then, so then that leaves us with the conversation, this is where we're at in the conversation now then. So we've just heard, and again, I'm, I'm seriously trying to be the, the, the facilitator here with this because I'm really, I get away their way, honestly. Based on what Mr. Splendario said, that, that regard, it not really a strong mayor. So, uh, you know, that really doesn't exist. They don't have any, they don't have any official more powers than they do. Now, with that being said, I'm not gonna say, it's no lie that being the mayor has some certain influence. I mean, it could be the smallest tiny thing. Like, for example, I sit with the city manager and the city attorney, we set the agenda. If we're looking at the agenda and I really was adamant about not having an item on the agenda or moving or whatever, there's a possibility I could make that persuasion and do that. So I just did that without any of your approvals. It could happen. It's possible, right? So there is some influence. It's not just extraordinary, but there's some little ones. Maybe they're middle school or not. So there is that. But he said, you know, it's not a strong mayor. So if you remove that out of the equation, so there's no, let's just say there's no worry of that. So then the argument would really be back to what Tim was saying earlier where you just worry about an inexperienced mayor being elected from at-large for the first time, just a walk-on mayor or not a walk-on mayor, but an elected mayor. And all, and, and also, and also going back to, even though it wouldn't be a strong mayor, going back to Matt's point where it could be a rotten person, could be like, that guy's, just because he had the most money and he had the most financial backing. So that still exists and your concern still exists. The only thing we really removed out of that equation right now is that it's really not a powerful position, so to speak.
It not powerful, but also the poster child for the city for what? You're the ones, the mayor is the one representative, there's a couple committees that the mayor represents the city on, and then you're helping cut ribbons and you're kissing babies and you're doing that on behalf of the city of Galt.
I've never kissed one baby so far.
Well, you failed. You're just.
Yeah, you better.
I mean, I'm not saying I wouldn't, but I've never had the opportunity.
Right, and who, and, and, and when somebody gets interviewed by the news media, right, who's the first person that they wanna interview? The mayor. Right? Not, I mean, they'll interview any of us, but we need to get the mayor, right?
So really, so what I'm hearing out of what we just heard is now the one positive that has just been created is that we do, we, by having the, the, the 4-1, we could have a position that could essentially be the only position that could change every two years, where the other ones are locked in for four. So that's, that's one positive that just arose that's a possibility. So does that offset the two negatives that we still have? Maybe not.
Depending on which side of it you're on. It could be a negative too, for the side that wants to keep that 3-2 or whatever.
Yeah.
I, I don't see it as a positive because right now, when we're appointing, we can appoint the same person two years in a row. We can appoint him four years in a row.
The only thing I, I, I wanna make one more point. The only my region, reason I'm advocating elected mayor is nothing else because that's, we have the opportunity to give the power back to the citizen. You know, I, I know these citizens, 25,000 population, I like to, that's, that's the only, is otherwise, I, I.
Power back to the people, meaning, just to try to understand what you're saying.
Yeah, give back to the people so they can make a decision who will be the mayor. Otherwise, I, I'm, I agree with you, the way I comment with Mr. Rodriguez.
So like, so not to interrupt you, sorry, I just wanted to, so what you're saying is currently, the, currently, the, the public doesn't decide on who gets to be the mayor. They, they have in a way because they decide who's gonna be up here. But then we decide who's the mayor. So they don't have a direct, they don't have a direct decision power in that. And you're saying in a 4-1, they, you would be giving that to them?
Right. And then the other thing is like, and at least when we was in the district, it's can be, everybody can be their own district. So there can be, nobody can be from whole, but I'm talking, but you know that. When you running for just only one district, if somebody have a problem, he's gonna call you and you can be most likely can responsible on that. Otherwise, if somebody elected from everybody, then everybody, if somebody have a problem, they can just call to the mayor, okay, this is my problem. How can you solve it? And when is it district, and we know what can happen. You can truly take care of your own district first, then you can take care of the city. That's, that's my concern with the public. Nothing else.
Well, I think that's gonna happen no matter what, even with the strong mayor. I mean, with not, with the unstrong mayor. Does any, so with that being said, does anybody in the public, because the public hearing is still open, does anybody wish to speak if they do? Mr. Lee, you can come to the dais if you'd like to speak.
Hello, I'm Ken Lee. I was wondering, if you have a citywide vote for mayor, how do you vote out a mayor? Does the voter count or the council vote count? If one district brings in all the constituents and basically votes majority and the other districts have a low voter turnout, that mayor would be out. So is it a majority vote versus the district, district ratio? I once had a, uh, Citizens' Police Academy and I divided my organization up to four districts. Well, one district came in, bought all their members and dissolved the organization by vote. And we had no say there, the three districts.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Yes, sir, Mr. Salinas. Mr. Salinas, it already.
Again, my name is Paul Sorensen.
Sir Salinas, you already, you already, you already spoke. Sorry about that. I forgot about that. Yes, sir. I apologize. Had I known that, I was under the impression that people could speak multiple times during a public comment, I mean, during a public hearing, so I apologize. Or I would have not taken comment in the beginning. Anybody else who has not yet spoken, wish to speak on this topic? Okay. Well, public hearing is still open at the moment until I close it, so. So I feel like we've had a little more discussion here. We've talked about having a 4-1 with a mayor that's two, only a two-year term. We've talked about the power of what a mayor would be in a 4-1. We've talked about the disadvantages and advantages of both. Has anybody changed their mind about their initial thoughts?
Nope.
Paul?
You know, if everybody agree, I'm not gonna be, you know, disagree with everybody. I'm, I, at the end of the day, if something, you know, everybody can go, I'm not gonna be, one, I'm gonna go along, but that's my concern with the public. Because I, this is my second term, I always said, I'm for the peoples. I just wanna make sure my statement is clear. I'm with the people. I like to be mayor, elected by the citizen of this year. But if my council wants to, you know, I, I, they, they already have the majority, they can move wherever they want. That's, that's my statement. I run, I, before I was elected for the public. If I run in the future, I'm not sure, I will for the public. That's why we have the opportunity to give that power back to the public instead of our council. I was a two-term already mayor. That's not mean I don't trust the council. I do trust the council. But that's kind of opportunity. I like to speak on the behalf of public.
Mr. Rodriguez or Mr. Reed? Any change of thoughts? Well, then it looks like, well, I appreciate the dialogue from everybody. I think it was good. I think we raised some points and I feel like some of us were very open-minded. And, you know, there was some room for persuasion. It is a tough decision for sure. I mean, it's, it is, it's tough. Nobody, none of us even wanna be doing this district. I mean, I think that's, can be said across the board and Mr. Wenzel reiterated that, but I think, uh, you know, I could go either way. But I want the council to be very uniformed on this. So in the spirit of making a, a uniform decision on something so important to the community, I will go with the, the three members and say that I would probably support. And I think the mayor just stated the same thing, even though it's not what he preferred. He's, he's obviously wants to be diplomatic and, and so I think we have a consensus that we're gonna go with the five district. Is that correct? Okay. So we're there with that.
Okay, so now that threshold question's been answered, we can look at the five district maps.
That wasn't too painful.
No, that was, in some ways, as someone said earlier, the two five district maps aren't hugely different anyway, so maybe, maybe we'll get to that. So, and then again, Liz does have the ability to do some, um, live drawing.
And we just had to give direction, right? There, we don't need a motion.
Correct, correct. There, there, assuming we get some direction on the boundary maps tonight, we will come back for an ordinance, for a first reading of ordinance at the next meeting where we will have a formal vote.
And, um, we can start off this discussion with which of the five districted maps you liked. And please tell me which ones you didn't like. Negative feedback is just as helpful as positive feedback. And I wanna say that was an incredibly thoughtful discussion and I'm gonna be stealing a lot of those talking points.
Well, I think it was important to the public, and I know there's not a lot of them here, but I appreciate the views that are here and people watching at home and may watch this in, in retrospect. But, uh, I think it was important that they see the deliberation and see how we meet. Or, you know, a lot of times you just see us vote, you know, like, well, why do you vote yes? Why do you vote no? But this is the kind of rare opportunity you get to see where everybody's thoughts are at and you kinda can see that, and that's, it's a great thing, so. I'll start off with the maps real quick. I, I, my concern is that, so now we're looking at the two maps, the two fives. They're so close. They're really very, so, they're not really, there's not much of a choice for me because they look identical almost.
And let me break them.
Five total five district maps, right?
So there are five, um, two new ones.
Yeah, those are just the two new ones.
Oh, okay.
They still have the old, uh, five district maps. So the five district maps are A2, C2, A, B, and C.
Gotcha. Right. So does any of those? So A2 and C2 obviously are very similar. Right? Yes. I mean, there's some, there's some slight tweaks with, with, with District Four and Five from what I can tell. Am I, am I looking at that correctly? Yeah. So are any of the other maps, because I don't have them in front of my screen right now, maybe, I don't know if you have them, Liz? Are ABC, are there any of those dramatically different than these two?
No, and let me, I'm gonna share my screen so I can show you essentially why they're very similar. Sharing. Okay, so this is A2. When we are drawing, uh, City of Galt, what we keep in mind is ensuring that we have a district that's over 50% Latino C-VAP. Again, in the spirit of the, uh, CVRA and ensuring we're meeting other obligations. So that essentially makes us, uh, locked in with District One. So District One is gonna look very similar in every other map. Which also means that District Two is locked in. So where we're gonna see the differences, it's really with Districts Five, Three, and Four.
So you're saying that, you're saying that Districts One and Two are locked in, that there's no possibility to change those?
I would not recommend that.
And what, and, and being why?
Uh, to ensure we meet that threshold of, of having a Latino C-VAP of over 50%. So we're ensuring that we're, um, uh, we have this protected class.
Okay.
And maximizing.
So, so I have a suggestion, and, and you could go this way, either with, with either A2 or C2. It doesn't really matter because the change that I'm gonna float out there to you guys is not really gonna matter on either one of these. But if you were to take District One, and I wish we had a whiteboard or something, but if you were to take District One and just expand it and cut off the bottom of District Four, I think you would not lose what you're looking for because you, what you would be absorbing into District One would be the area south of the market that I just described, which is a heavy Latino population. So you would definitely be gaining, you would definitely not be losing, you would be gaining. So right now, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, number, District One, correct if I'm wrong, District One is your, is your district where you're getting your, your representation, right?
Yeah.
So you would get more so if you went over there and took that. But by doing that, and I know you don't know this because obviously you don't live here and you don't understand you know, the neighborhoods and the nuances, but you would basically be taking the area south of the market and you would be putting it in with the old part of town, and those are very contiguous, like, I don't know if that's the right word, but they're very similar type neighborhoods. And you're not gonna lose the, that, that minority representation. And what you're also gonna be doing by that is decreasing, shrinking, well, maybe you, you would have to move four up and absorb more, but four is the area where I think you're gonna see the growth that you're not anticipating because that has the notch property in it and that's being developed right now. I don't, that's, that's where I think you're gonna see a lot more. Correct me if I'm wrong, is it, is it, is it likely that you would see more growth in the next three years, Chris, in the notch property than you would see in Liberty Ranch?
I don't know if you'd see more. I think, uh, you know, there's potential that you'd get more home construction in Liberty Ranch just because of a number of different home builders versus one home builder in the notch area. But what you do have to consider for Area Four, it does, it looks like it encompasses Fairway Oaks, which, uh, you know, is a new development, if I recall, roughly 200.
Okay, so, so, so now we're talking about development in, in, in Fairway Oaks and the notch.
Right.
So, so now, you're right. Thank you for bringing that up. So now you're talking about a, 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 a really significant chance of growth in District Four.
Yeah.
Five will get, five's gonna get growth for sure, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, we estimate the notch to, what, five to 10-year, uh, build-out period. Liberty Ranch, probably more 10 to 15. But you gotta remember, Liberty Ranch has three times as many homes, uh, in that.
So, so what I'm, what I'm proposing, Liz, and I know that, I, I hope I can explain this correctly because I know you don't know the street names, but for those of the, all of us do, what I'm proposing is that, that District One, instead of being cut off, right now, it looks like District One is, if you take Lincoln Way all the way down and you're going out of town, so you're going, you're gonna go across the Lower Sac Bridge, Red Creek, that's the cutoff. So everything over on the south of the market, like where I live, you guys all know where I live, right? Okay, so that all is now District Four. I'm saying that should be part of District One. By doing that, um, you're, you're crossing over Lincoln, but you're, but you could also take it up to City Hall. So basically, everything from the building we're in now going that way, we would now absorb into the meta view and that's more like-minded. And, and the natural boundary of C Street is really the new, what I would suggest being the cutoff for one. So you take one down and C Street's your cutoff.
The one issue you're gonna have with that, from what, from my, from what I'm looking at, is your population variance. Right? You already, uh, number one is, well, is almost at that point where it's the, coming close to the 10% for Five and we can't go over that. So if we add more people to One, we're gonna have to adjust some other things to stay within that.
Well, I, and I, and you, you make a good point. I think we could do that, though. I think, I think.
I'm just pointing it out.
I think, I think District One doesn't need to be as tall as it is. What I'm seeing District One needs, District One needs to encompass more of the south area and not go up as high. So you could, you could take some of that away. But I'm just telling you, what I'm seeing is, it's, you have the tail end of Four, you have the south, the bottom end of District Four is, is, is a completely different socioeconomic demographic, completely different than what you're seeing. Even by crossing the highway. I mean, look, go, go from down where I live over to where Fairway Oaks is, even that's a dramatic huge difference. Honestly. Right? So I think, my, and this, and this change would not disrupt her goal of getting that Hispanic representation. It's, it's gonna augment it, honestly.
My other concern with the border between One and Four is, is that Galt High is in District Four. And it represents all of One and all the students from One and Two go to, go to Galt High. And it's right on the edge of Four.
That's a good point.
When Liberty is up in Five and everybody from Four, Three.
Yeah. So, what he's explaining is, so basically, based on dep, you know, geography, the bulk of your students that go to Galt High School are gonna be from District One and Two, but yet the high school itself is in another district. So it's kinda weird.
So we can go ahead and make changes if you would like, and I can show you. And when we were drawing originally, I'm not very confident we'll be able to change District One, so let's go ahead and see what it looks like. And I'm gonna.
Anybody, so that's just my, I'm just throwing it out there. I wanna hear, I wanna hear. If anybody else has any ideas? hear, if anybody else has any ideas?
As many people up in that north little sliver that, of District 1 than there is to what you wanna add to it, so I think it is gonna grow.
The ho, the homes, the influence, the, you know, the, everything is different. Actually, I, I can't really see it from here, but what, on that upper part of District 1, what neighborhood is that?
It's-
Okay, Poplar, Ellis Ray, Simon, okay, so if you, so if you took out, let's say you dropped down to Simon Street, and you got rid of all that, but then you added in, you know, Cordosa, Southdale Court, Melody Lane, all that, I don't think you're, that's almost as-
But there's not very many, many of the streets that is named. Well, a lot more than that, but I don't, I don't know what the threshold, I didn't look at the numbers, so.
Let's, let's draw it, and let's see what it looks like, right? So you can draw that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go ahead and start making that shift to 1, so we can take a look at it, so I'm gonna put just-
So the first thing we need to do is we need to get Galt High School into 1, so if you need to stretch Galt High Schools, if you need to do, if you need to shift slightly to the, to the right to encompass Galt High School, I don't know if, it's hard, I can't really point that out where that's at on the map, but it's on Lincoln Way, across from Myrtle Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
So where, where Myrtle Avenue tees into Lincoln Way, it would be directly across the street from that, that would be the, the high school campus.
Is it, sorry, can you orient me on the map?
Uh, I can't see that, so unfortunately.
Okay, so this is, this is the highway, this is Myrtle, I believe.
Yeah, there's Myrtle, okay, that's Myrtle right there, yeah, that street, that you have your pointer on?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so Myrtle deadens into Oak Avenue to the left, right, so it deadens into Oak right there, and then the other way it deadens into Lincoln Way, no, go over more.
So this is Oak, right here.
Okay.
Myrtle.
Yep, right, so take Myrtle to your right, keep going, and when it deadens, that's Lincoln Way, correct?
Uh, what is it, Camelia? Camelia?
That's way too far, we're looking for Lincoln Way.
Oh, Lincoln is right here.
Yes, right, so stop, stop your pointer for a second, move your pointer up slightly, a little bit more, a little bit more, no, down, go, go to the T in the road, I'm sorry, right there, to the right of your pointer, immediately to your right is Galt High School.
Then it's-
I don't know if you can see it on your map, if there's a big square or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you want that included with 1?
So Galt High School goes from Lincoln Way, where you're at now, over to Camelia, that's the entire campus, so you would need to go to Camelia, you would need to stretch that over to Camelia Way.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you.
So all of that goes in 1?
Exactly.
Okay, great.
You talking about, the idea I'm talking about?
So that gives us, go ahead and take, so now District 1 has a deviation of 18.5%, so we're gonna have to take some population away.
Okay.
Um, and is there anywhere in part-
So, 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 if you can pan out, does, does District 1 go any further to the north than that part you just added? Where does, where's the top part of District 1?
It's right there, along freeway.
Okay, so you went to, so we didn't need to go all the way to Amador, so you can shrink that down, you can go to, you can go to Wendy Hope?
Well, remember they have to follow the census tracks.
Yeah.
No, I, I get it, well, I'm just trying to find some boundary, like-
This is Elm right here, Simon.
Yeah, by going down to Elm, you're not gonna lose much, you're looking to, you're looking to shed some numbers, right?
Mm-hmm.
Trying to pull the map up again here. So, I mean, we're, obviously we're trying to accomplish two things, we're trying to accomplish getting the high school into District 1, and then also maybe enveloping-
So to give you an idea of what the census blocks look like, I'm gonna exit out, this is one census block.
Okay.
Um, which I believe goes right above, this is the school.
Okay.
Or I, I think the school goes all the way out here, okay, so we can get rid of that, and then this, and then we can see that the deviation now, it's at 11%.
We're close.
It's getting closer.
What's it, 10, is it 10% threshold?
Well, we have to make sure that the total deviation is under 10%, so if, if we can get it closer to like 6%, I think that would be ideal, and also making sure that we're paying attention to the Latino CVAP as well.
Are we on, are we on, so are we on, are we working on A2 or C2 right now, I'm sorry?
Uh, this is A, I wasn't able to pull up A2.
That's all right, that's all right, I'm just wanting to know what map I'm looking at here, okay, so A2, let me pull that up, sorry, okay, so, and you're curving, okay, what about, what about the properties?
Oh, in here?
What about the properties on, on 3rd Street and 2nd Street?
Oh, okay.
So if you go down, if you go down, Liz, go down to the bottom part of 1, go down, okay, so go down, see where, see where, see where the whole, see where the, see where the district becomes widest, to the, to the left, over to the left, the widest part, over to the left, no, to your left, there you go, yeah, so all that area there, so what is the cutoff right there, what street is that cutoff, is that, is that 1st Street? Where, where the red line is, the red line? No, no, go down, go down, go down, go down, more and more, right, the red line right there, go to your right, the vertical line, there you go, that.
This is the border of the city.
Oh, so that's, so it has Metaview in there?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, I just, it's hard because I can't see the, I can't see the map with the colors, I mean, it would be so much easier.
1st Street.
Sorry, what I'm, what I'm thinking of as soon as she pulls it up, is that you could, you could take out some of that upper part there, so you wanna stay where you're at with Metaview, with Dover, because that's Metaview area, you wanna keep all that in there, but if you go up north, I think there's some area up on the north part, right in there somewhere-
Mm-hmm.
-that we can take out, and add it into District 2.
Okay, but I do have to warn you, District 2 is already at 6.24% deviation, so we actually don't want to add more to District 2, because it's already overpopulated.
So, okay, do you think we want to pick it up?
Yeah, exactly, so we're looking to add it to District 4-
Okay.
-which is at negative 21% deviation, so we do need to pick up population in District 4.
Okay, well, we're gonna, but I know we are with the development, but you can't factor that in, right now I understand that, so, so it's just hard, because we're looking at these lines, we can't see streets, we can't, I mean, she's trying to pull it up, I wish we had a just, I wish we had a big whiteboard that we could walk up to and, and just, right?
Okay, so-
Trying, trying.
So if I were to accept the changes here, where we add this in-
Where we add the high school campus in?
Take this out, I believe the high school's still in there.
Okay.
So high school's in District 1.
Okay.
Um, we have a deviation for District 1 of being 4%, and-
Use the plus for that.
And the Latino CVAP is 50.86, I do worry that's a little too low, but it is over 50%.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Liz, I'm, I got the map up now, give me a sec here.
But you understand the point he's making, so, I mean, you could work on that, and it wouldn't be difficult, I wouldn't think, for him.
Give me just a second here, let me just look, okay, so you've, I see where you've added, you've added, you've added up to Amador at the angle, so the part in the green right now, you're saying take that back out, is that what you're suggesting, Liz?
So this part, yeah, take this part out.
That top triangular section, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, so that's the Amador Elm little, yeah, that's fine, and so by doing that, where does that get you at that point?
So 1 has a deviation of 4%, we can add this population in with 4, which we'll still need to get more population for 4, I believe, and it gives us a DV, or a Latino CVAP of just over 50%, I do recommend we make this a little bit smaller in population size, so if there are any other areas we can take out.
I'm, I'm looking at your map, and I'm looking at my map, so give me a second here, let me back out a second, so leave that up for a moment so I can see the shape you're working on here, okay.
Because if we have to add to 4, I think we might also be able to grab some from 3, but we're not gonna be able to take any from 5.
So you're trying to, problem is, we haven't even added in the market area that I wanted to add in yet, so that's gonna throw everything off, Fairway, A Street, Wendy Hope.
If you go towards the market, you're gonna gain.
You can't shrink, you, you can't, you can't shrink, you can't bring the upper part of Elm, you can't very, take the top part, the very top part, yeah, that section right there, you can't eliminate any of that?
That's the census block that pops up.
Okay, so take all that out.
Great. And then that gives us a negative deviation of 4.7.
What does that mean?
Uh, it means we probably wanna-
We could add up to 4 to get, to get even, we could add more to 1 then, right?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so now let's leave that there, because we're at a negative 4, now go down to the southern, the southern, the most bottom part of, of 1, and we're gonna stretch that over to, and let me zoom in, so we want to take and add in the census block down in the far corner, it's, it's a, it's a triangular shape, really, between Fairway Drive, Melody Lane, and Glendale, and Glendale, and Glendale, actually, or maybe even further than that, I'm sorry.
Glendale?
So you probably have, I don't know if John knows what I'm trying to do here?
Huh? Could you repeat that, please, Mayor?
So we're trying to add in, we're trying to add in the whole neighborhood that's south of the market, so that would be Cordosa, Glendale, Melody Lane, Southdale Court, Melody Lane, all that, that's a whole neighborhood.
That's the area?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so now that, just by doing that, we now have a positive deviation of 5.21 with a Latino CVAP of 48.96.
And so where, so where do we need to be with the Latino?
So what I recommend is ensuring we have a Latino CVAP of at least 50%, and-
Did we have that before?
We did, yeah.
Really?
It went down, basically.
Yeah.
Huh?
By about four or five points.
And that's, and, and that's not in every district, because if we have one district in the city that's above 50, then we're good, so it doesn't have to be District 1, it could be District 2.
But you're not gonna get it in another district?
Correct, you wanna have, all the maps we've, all, all the maps that we've had, the 10 that we've had thus far, they've only had 1, we can get one majority-minority district, and I think it's always been 1.
Mm-hmm.
So we're good on population?
Um-
Variance, right?
I would, yes, essentially.
Well, what did it do to the other district, though?
So what it, what we have right now is, 2 is still the largest, with 6.2% deviation, and then the lowest is 5, so that's gonna give us about 7, 8%.
I mean, it's important of the high school, I'm just telling you, that, that neighborhood down, and I tell you because that's where I live, and I'm not trying to vie for, it doesn't ma, I don't care what district, where I live, it doesn't, it's not gonna matter to me, but I'm telling you that that neighborhood down there doesn't belong with District 4, period, it's, it very much belongs with District 1, they're very much like, and it, and it's, and it's, and it is heavily populated with Latino, so whereas you take the other side of District 1, which is the Metaview area, and that's also highly populated with Latino as well, so you, I think you're, that's why I think they fit together, I'm just trying to figure out how you get, I'm surprised why you're only at 47%, wow.
And, you know, if you wanna direct us to create a map where we keep that together and shoot for over 50%?
Yes, you do that, so I think two goals here, if I'm understanding, to keep Galt High School in District 1, okay, or, or 2, but it doesn't look like that's possible, right, and, and encompass all this area down south of the market into 1 somehow, that's kinda the two things we're trying to accomplish.
If we took one of the census blocks that sits right on the border between 1 and 2, and flipped it over to 1, since 2 is the highest right now, would that-
That's true, that's a good point, yeah.
Would that be able to get us-
Just over 50, oh, thank you, never turned that on, uh, over 50 for District 1? Yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea.
So you're suggesting-
One of those census blocks that, that is right on the border between 1 and 2, if we just flipped it from 2 to 1, would that be able to get us over the 50 of the- Because 2, because 2 has the most people, so we could, they could afford to shed people, but we're also gaining people into 1.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna accept that, let me look at, I know that there could be some higher Latino populations up here, so let me try that, so 1 to 2.
Sorry, this is taking a while, folks, but this is important, so.
It is.
We'd all be doing something different if we're doing it at home.
It's still, and we would have to take away population, it's pretty stagnant at 48% if we add this in there. Um, I, we can keep drawing, I'm happy to stay here as long as you want, but you can direct me to try to achieve that goal of ensuring we get a majority-minority district while keeping in the high school, I just can't promise that'll happen, so, you know, benefit of keeping, you know, where we're going right now is you'll be able to see the map before you vote on it.
So let's, I, I think that's a good idea, why, why don't we as the council look at the other, because we've looked at 1, we've looked at 2, we've looked at parts of 4, why don't we go to the other end of the city and give our recommendations on those, and then she will have a better idea of-
Yeah, 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 okay, so now you want, you guys wanna go up and look at 5?
3, 3 and 5, and the top part of 4, I guess.
So I'm looking at natural boundaries with, it looks like they're using Walnut Avenue is kind of the, the boundary for the bottom of 5, where 5 touches 3 and 4, I mean, I guess that looks like a, a natural brown, boundary, right?
Yeah, there's a similar one.
Okay, I got it. You're gonna get a lot of growth in 5 with that little cookie, that little cookie piece at the top, that's a Summerfield project, so you're gonna get growth there, and you're gonna get it in Liberty Ranch.
And, and the good part was, on the populations, 5 was the least, so we have that ability to-
Well, 5, 5, based on what St. Andrew said a minute ago, and I forgot about Summerfield, 5 is probably gonna get the most growth in the next years.
By far, yep.
Right, Chris?
Agreed.
Yeah, because I forgot about the 200 and some odd homes in the Summerfield.
And, and I do think that growth is an important discussion, I just don't want it to be the number one criteria, since we do have a ranked list of criteria we have to follow, and you redistrict, so once, the next-
2030?
Yeah, 2031.
She's got a good point, it's, it's better to make this decision now and only have to redistrict four years from now instead of-
Well, it's better, I think it's better that you have like neighborhoods, kind of, because they have mutual interest, than worry about one of your districts becoming a little lopsided because of home, home growth, that growth that's gonna come in this district is gonna be very similar to the houses already there, so it's not gonna be something way different, you know what I mean, like, so, would you agree?
Yeah.
Like the growth, does that make sense, Bonnie?
The growth that's gonna happen in Summerfield and Liberty Ranch into 5 is, it's still gonna be like area, right? Like, it's not gonna be, whereas what we're trying to do down there in the market area and stuff is trying to keep like-minded, like-minded, but like, similar neighborhoods together, you know what I mean?
And I can pull up the other maps. It might be easier to see it on the U R L links.
Because that, that's all, that's what we're all using.
Okay, great. So, I mean, here is, oh, you can't see it. Let me change the screen. So here is C two. In terms of how it is structured, actually, it's very similar to what we saw, which again, let me show you some of the issues that we have with the top area in terms of census blocks. So first of all, we do want to make sure this area is travel contiguous. And really, the only way we can make sure that happens is if we connect the side of the freeway down here. And when we do that, I want to share just what a census block down here looks like. Where's the down here?
Yeah, we don't see a cursor or nothing.
Let me change it.
Well, the only crossovers would be.
Yeah, that's the, we brought that concern up before.
Twin Cities or Amador.
Yeah, there only, there only is two travel paths from east to west side.
Yeah, so ensuring District Three is travel contiguous. Wanting, the goal is to make sure that people can travel freely without having to leave it. When we do that, we do have to make sure that we are following the census blocks. And this is one of the census blocks. So. And one of the members of the public did ask, how were these census blocks created? The original census blocks, it's a process, but it does start from the U S Census Bureau. It's made from algorithms, not necessarily people. And then the county is supposed to help ensure the blocks make sense. Usually for non.
And then make sure it's travel contiguous.
Yeah.
And then they can't vary for more than certain percent, and they have to have a certain, I mean, it's like, how do you even?
So that hole in that, in the pink one that you're showing, is that its own census block?
Yes.
It doesn't connect to something else?
No. So I mean, this, we have to make sure this stays together. And then because this is within that census block, we have to make sure that stays whole as well. So this is essentially what we're working around when we are creating Districts Three, Four, and Five in addition to the population.
I don't know. I, I look at the boundaries between Three, Four, and Five, and I don't see any, I don't see a lot of. You're, you're basically cutting right through a neighborhood that's like, you could take a neighborhood, it's in Three and Five and Four, and they're all similar neighborhoods. So I don't really think the boundaries are that important, to be honest with you. I just don't think they are.
That's, that's one of the reasons I like the, the A, the A map for the Five, is it's very like, the divider between Four and Five is Walnut. The divider between Five and Three is Walnut. And, and then the tracks, it's very.
A, the original A.
Yeah. Instead of like, one of the ones that we just, the new one, it has like this arm that goes up around, you know, above, that just sticks out. I like, A is very cut and dry about the boundaries. There's no like little outputs or anything like that.
I think we're close with A. I think we're close. I think you have, I mean, if you could just figure out that nuance with the, you know, trying to get a few more, get that number from forty eight to fifty. And, and play with the populations between the two and the one. I think you're close. I mean.
Yeah, and I am happy to bring back a couple of options, assuming it's possible. And obviously, I'll work closely with staff to ensure that we're meeting those barriers. Do you guys want to keep drawing?
No, I, I think, I mean, I'm personally, I think you got direction on what you can do. I think if you can come back and make that work. If you can make that happen with, we reach that fifty, that fifty percent Latino, we're certainly not too far skewed between the population for one or the other. I think that's a good workable map. I mean, you could sit there and dissect from street to street all you want, but we're just trying to generally get a certain neighborhood together and then get the high school. I think those are the two goals we all agreed on, is try to get the high school into District One. Right? Because it, because it's made up of people from District One and Two. And then try to encompass that Southern Market area because it's, because it's very like to the Metta View area, keep all those together.
And just out of curiosity, Frank, do they have? What is their deadline to complete this? I don't know if there's time for an extra meeting.
It's tech, it's technically April first, but. I, if, yeah, so we could either go back, the first and second meeting in March, or we could do the second meeting in March, and I think that'll be fine to introduce it before the deadline. I don't think that that's going to be. I've talked to Shankman about this. I don't think he's, cares too much. As long as it's introduced by the deadline is what he cares about the most. If that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, so if you do need an extra meeting, it does sound like there might be potential wiggle room.
I don't know if they're suggesting an extra meeting, though. I'm just hearing they want you to come back with the map that they're looking at. And we can have alternative ordinances.
Yeah.
Or alternative maps, and they can pick one on the dice. I don't think we need to call an extra meeting. I think we're pretty close to the, you know, it's just, we're looking at a couple census tracts at this point. It sounds like, yeah. So I think we should, we'll come back for the fifth meeting to introduce ordinance. If we have to, we'll have a couple different versions of the map, but otherwise, we could still vote on it that night.
So I think one thing would be important to understand when you go back on these maps is, with District One right now, the entire District One, with you stretching it over like this, right? Or okay, like this, you've pretty much bordered, you're shoved up against San Winkin County. So Galt, there is no further south than that, and there's no further west than that. So you've got the whole bottom. So really, the only work you need to figure out is in the upper parts up here, like in the upper left quadrant, to try to shift to get that fifty percent number you need. You're not going to have, that's the only place you're going to be able, somewhere in there, if you can do it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And I would just ask if this makes sense to everyone on the council? There's a consensus on, on, on the direction that's being given? And also, I want to make sure that you have the direction you need, because I, what I don't want to do is not get this right.
So why don't you repeat back to us?
Yes, thank you for that, thank you for that, Mayor.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing, you guys are good with how it looks up here. So I'm not going to be making.
Map, is that for the record?
And this is map A.
Okay, so, okay, so you're good in that bay, dot, dot, dot.
And then we want to make sure that the high school is with District One. It is more similar, and that's where all the students from District Two and One go to. So it's important to keep that in there. And then potentially looking down here for more population and bringing it up to a C V A P of over fifty percent for.
Yeah, so, so when you're looking at that bottom, that bottom part that I, we have been working on bringing in. So Highway ninety nine, what you have is you have, District Four comes down, and it jumps over Highway ninety nine in the, in the original, before we did any changes. It jumps over ninety nine and goes into that area south of the market. So if you were just to say ninety nine is the cutoff, bam, right there. Everything, everything west of Highway ninety nine goes into District One. That's, that's your boundary.
Which, to be honest, isn't contiguous anyway. Right? Because there is no crossover.
Originally wasn't contiguous.
There is no crossover over the freeway down there.
No, this is, this is better, natural boundary, natural, yeah, everything, hundred percent.
You would have to go into District One to now get to the rest of District Four down in that south part.
Yeah, the way you had it first designed, you can't even get to that part of District Four. You can't get there unless you went up and around and down, so it wasn't even contiguous. So doing what we're doing is, makes most sense anyways.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Good, look forward to seeing some changes if we come back.
Yep. I agree.
All right. So public hearing is still open. Anybody else want to speak on this matter before I close the public hearing? Going once, going twice. All right, public hearing is closed. Thank you for all sticking with us. Anybody asleep out there in the audience? All right. Now we get to move on to something that's really going to excite us all. Budget stuff. All right. So we got direction, preferred, okay, so there's no vote on that. All right, we are moving on to item L, regular calendar from the Finance Department, item L one. The subject is fiscal year ending, for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, City's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the Independent Audit, Auditors Report, Independent Accountants Report, as it applies to Proposition one eleven, Appropriations Limit and Independent Auditors Report on the Compliance with A B three seven seven three. Ms. Saunders.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Carly Saunders, interim Finance Director. First, I just want to point out, this isn't budget related. It kind of captures what our budget was for last year, but it's, isn't like additional appropriations or anything. This is just accepting the audited report. So the item presented tonight is the audited annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four. The report details the city's financial position and activities for fiscal year ending six thirty, twenty twenty four. The recommendation tonight is to approve the audited financial statements and the auditor's reports. Or am I pointing it? Yeah. Turn it off again. We needed further delay.
It worked at the beginning of the meetings.
Yeah.
No, in ours, in our office.
It was not. It was off.
Oh, there you go.
I'll just do it for you, so we can get going.
Randy fixed it.
No, I was pushing the button.
This presentation will include a look at what the annual financial report is, some highlights of the financial statements. We'll start with a government wide, which includes the statement of net position, and then kind of a focused look on the governmental activities, and then the business type activities. Then we'll take a look at the fund level review, the general fund, Measure Q, and Parks and Recreation. We'll take a quick, quick look at the Galt Market income. And then I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Andy Heath. He's a consultant that we've been working with for some advising and financial forecasting. So it's a good opportunity to kind of get his expertise on.
Arlie, could you speak into the microphone?
Is it not loud enough? Thank you. And then we'll take some questions at the end. And then I'll do my best to just kind of briefly explain this, but I did want to provide some general information for you guys. So just hang in there, because it is a lot to get through. I know it's been a long night. And then some of the slides, they may be hard to see on here, so you may need to reference your documents that you have. So the annual comprehensive financial report, commonly referred to as the AC F R, is a financial report that summarizes the government's financial activities for a fiscal year. It includes audited financial statements, performance data, and statistical information. For fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, the auditors issued an unmodified opinion of the financial statements with no reported findings. So that's essentially a clean audit. It is prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and the governmental accounting standards boards. So I know sometimes when we're looking at it, we're like, why is it presented that way? And that's exactly why it's presented that way. It's got standards in place. And then there is additional compliance criteria required for submission to the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And we comply with those so that we can submit for that award. The city received this award for twenty two, twenty three, and anticipates receiving it for the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. This slide is the condensed statement of net position. It's a government wide statement, which presents the long term focus of a government's financial health for both the government activities and the business type activities. So as opposed to the fund statements that we'll look at in a little bit, this is like long term, and it includes capital assets and long term liabilities. So it's, it's looking at what they call total economic resources. The governmental activity includes all funds, other than the enterprise funds, which are in the business type activity. So it's got the general fund, the Parks and Rec Fund, all the special revenue funds. Capital improvement funds are all included in the governmental activities. At fiscal year end, our net position is two point six seven million, an increase of twenty two point four million, or nine point one percent over last fiscal year. This position, this positive net position demonstrates the cost of services received to date have been fully funded. And then the next few slides will provide some additional insight into the increase in the net position as it relates to the revenue and expenditures. Okay. So this is the condensed statement of activities, looking at the governmental revenue. It's, it's a focused look at, at the governmental side of the net position. Governmental revenues increased by eight point four six million, or twenty point eight percent from last fiscal year, primarily due to increased sales tax and charges for city services. The full year receipts of Measure Q drove the sales tax increase, and development growth impacted both charges for services such as plan fees, engineering fees, licenses. All of those were, were increased in fiscal year twenty four. This is again, the condensed statement of activities. We're looking at the governmental expenditures. They increased by four point five million, or fourteen point nine percent from last fiscal year, primarily due to increased spending in public safety, general government, and Parks and Recreation categories, largely from project expenditures. The Parks and Recreation repres, increase represents the implementation of Measure Q expenditure plan and the spending priorities resolution. So some of the projects that were included were the Walker Park turf replacement, the Corp yard improvements, and C Street enhancements. The business type activities. These are not as exciting as the other two, so I didn't do the pie chart for them. But the business type activities are primarily funded by user fees and charges, which support the system's ongoing operations and long term maintenance. The increase from the prior year of three point three million is primarily due to addition of new homes and utility services and increased usage. Business type expenses increased by one point eight, or eleven point nine percent, driven by increased operating costs and capital projects. Okay, so now we're moving into the fund financial statements. And these are like what they call current economic resources. So we're looking more short term, like in the, in the twelve month period. The general fund tracks the financial activity of the city's core services and operations. At fiscal year end, the general fund reported a fund balance of twenty nine point seven million, an increase of five point six million, or twenty three point three percent, driven by increased sales and property tax revenue, increased fees and licenses related to building development, and increased interest on investments. So if we're looking at what makes up that fund balance, there's a hundred and eighty thousand that's non spendable. That's what we have is prepaid and inventory. There is six point nine million that's committed. That includes our economic stability reserve. We have about three million in assigned. That includes encumbrances and compensated absences. And then we have nineteen point five in unassigned. And it's important to note that that includes Measure Q and the remaining ARPA funds.
Sorry, I have a question before you move on real quick.
Okay.
The unassigned includes Measure Q and ARPA. Obviously, the ARPA is self explanatory. That's, you know, money from that, we haven't. Does, does all that that you mentioned, unassigned, is that, has any of that been designated for a purpose yet? Or all of it has? The nine.
Are you talking about the ARPA funds specifically?
All that nineteen, the Q and, the Measure Q and the ARPA.
All of the.
As unassigned, does that mean it's not designated for anything yet?
It means it's not committed in any other way in any of those other. It means it's not committed in any other way in any of those other categories, so it's considered unassigned, but that doesn't mean that it hasn't been appropriated by council in some way.
Okay, that's my question. All right, thank you.
So overall, revenues decreased 23.7 million. No, the decrease of 762,000 or 3.1%. That's primarily from the ARPA that was recorded in fiscal year 23. It was a large lump sum of 6.2 billion, so there's a decrease in the revenues this year. And then expenditures decrease of 746,000. That's very similar. We had, you know, higher expenses last year related to ARPA. Okay, and here we're taking a look at the Parks Funds and the Measure Q Funds. I just wanted to note that these are just example statements. You wouldn't find them in the financial statements at all. Measure Q is presented with the general fund in the statements. And then the Parks Funds, the Parks and Rec Fund is a major fund, so it's kind of at the front of the statements. The lighting and landscape districts are non-major funds, so they're towards the back. But I know, you know, we kind of wanted to demonstrate what's happening with the Parks Funds and Measure Q, so I created these statements so you could see the ins and outs. So if you're looking at the Parks Funds, there's the revenue, and then the expenditures. Those were according to the Measure Q expenditure plan. So if you remember, the general fund contribution policy wasn't implemented for 23-24, so this was all items that were appropriated according to the expenditure plan that was passed through council. So if you look at the expenditures by category there, and then we're looking at the transfers in and transfers out, you'll see that 670,000 came in to the Parks and Recreation Fund from the general fund. You'll see transfers in from Measure Q for each of the fund, and then transfers from project cost recovery and cost allocation. So essentially, those transfers balance each of those funds.
Carly, on the right side of this that you have up now, it says the Measure Q, the revenue is 4.6 and change.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just the gross revenue that Measure Q brought in?
That is net revenue, yes. I think the taxes themselves were 4.6, and then a couple hundred dollars more in there.
And that was year ending June 30th?
Correct.
Do we have any idea? I can't recall. When did that? I'm just trying to figure out that money was generated and what sort of timeframe.
That was a full year.
That was one full year.
Yeah. If you look down at the transfers in, oh, I also wanted to note for the expenditures. So there aren't any expenditures in Measure Q because we are recording those in the other funds. So everything in Measure Q is the taxes in, and then the transfers in or transfers out. The transfer in that you see there is the fiscal year revenue, fiscal year 23 revenue from the general fund. So that was the receipts that we had for the partial year in fiscal year 23. And then you can see the transfers out to each of the funds from Measure Q, and so we've got an ending fund balance of Measure Q of 3.597. Okay, and then I just wanted to take a quick look at the GALT market income. I know last year there was a decrease. This year, there was an increase of 115,000, primarily due to increased advertising for the market and better weather. I think the year before, we had some terrible weather, so that didn't help the market at all.
You know, I would like to point out while you're on this graph, and maybe, maybe the only people up here that remember this would be Paul and I, but I remember when we were shown a graph where the market revenue was literally going like a rocket down into nothing, and we were like, there was like super panic mode, and we made all kinds of things and decisions based on that. And now I'm looking at that, and the graph, in fact, went the other way. I just think it's fascinating. I just think that's interesting. Continue on, Carly, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, and then I was going to ask Andy to come up. Like I said, he's a consultant that we've been working with for some general advising. He's preparing the financial forecast for us, so he has a ton of experience. He's been working in municipal finance for many, many years. So I kind of talked to him. Obviously, he's looked at our financials, and he's given us an A+? An A? So his, the financial statements indicate that the city is fiscally healthy. Often, cities are burdened with significant long-term debt and unfunded liabilities. This is not true for GALT, as evidenced by the positive net position in both the governmental and the business-type funds. A general fund balance of approximately 26 million, that's excluding Measure Q, that exceeds 100% of the general fund expenditure base, is a substantial financial advantage. And then, you know, he said you should thank the council for their foresight in ensuring the city maintains a viable fiscal position.
Well, I do have to say, I remember when we first came on council poll, I remember the general fund being somewhere around 17, maybe 18-ish million, if I recall. So to be at 26 is quite a jump in six years.
So he's going to...
If anybody was here that can verify that number, I'm pretty certain that's what it was, somewhere in there.
It's probably in the stats. If we looked back in the stats section, it's got like 10-year history. We could probably reference it. But that is the end of the presentation. Andy's going to stick around, take some questions, and I'm happy to answer any. I did want to point out that in the stats section, I think it's page 168, when we're looking at FTEs, the numbers that we had presented in 2024 didn't include part-time employees for Parks and Recreation. And then we did include the council and treasurer in the management services. So it looks like we had a big jump in management services, and then we didn't have any increase in Parks and Rec. So I've revised that schedule so that it's easily consistent among the years. And then, I'm not sure, Tina, how, if we can get that posted with the website document so that it's least accurate there, this revised schedule.
Yeah, I'm doing it right now.
Okay. And then we'll update those numbers for next year's ACFOR so that it does stay consistent. So I am happy to take any questions.
Before you go to questions, you know, I do want to just recognize and introduce Andy Heath. As Carly stepped up and worked as an interim finance director, we brought on Andy to provide some support to Carly, and they both have worked together fantastically. So I really appreciate the efforts that both provided. The audit itself provides evidence, you know, of, you know, Carly's dedication and hard work, and then with Andy's guidance, being able to come forward with it. So it's, they've been a great team for the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just by way of background, you know, I'm Andy Heath. I've got 35 years of municipal experience with both city and county governments, and I worked for a number of cities. And for the last seven years or so, I've worked predominantly as a contractor for multiple cities all across the state, from the bottom of the state in El Centro, all the way up to Willow's, California, up in Northern California, and everything in between. Came into the city and have been assisting Carly primarily, well, first with the audit and getting the things done that needed to be done to complete the audit itself, some of the Gatsby statements that required accounting adjustments for pensions and/or health benefits. Worked on those with her and did all that. Also went through the MDNA, the Management's Discussion Analysis, which is at the front of your report that you have, and made sure that it was representative of exactly the things that were going on in the city. Real quick, just about your audit, from my perspective, I think that your city is extremely healthy fiscally. You mentioned the general fund balance of about $26 million. The slide size 29, but that includes 3 million or so in Measure Q money that has yet to be spent at the end of fiscal '24. That $26 million is a good number to have. And I realize that you have that separated out in various assigned reserves that might be for economic contingencies and things like that. But when you add all those together, having 26 million where your general fund expenditure base is 20 million, okay, is a very, very good number for a city the size of GALT. Also recognize that you have Measure R, which funds a good majority of your police program. And also, you now have Measure Q, which is a backstop to several funds, primarily Parks and Rec, and then your Parks and Rec Fund as well, that all sort of fall under the purview of the general fund, but you have distinct revenue sources for a lot of those activities that are in those separate funds. And you've identified those, and you account for those separately, and they are healthy as well. As well. The last thing I want to mention is, we have been working on a financial forecast for the city that looks at, pretty much at a very, very detailed level, all the way down to the line item for your general fund, for Measure R, for the Parks and Rec Fund, and will likely roll Measure Q into that as well, because Measure Q has such an important impact on the city moving forward. That forecast is being, I've been working with the city manager and the interim finance director on that, and hopefully, you know, it can get before the council at some point in time in the future so you can see exactly what's going on in your city. Because what I have found in the past is that when I do these presentations, both in closed session for different labor matters, and then also with the public, is that you tend to learn things maybe you didn't know before about your city, looking at the forecasts and how to proceed forward in your policy decisions and different questions to ask. So hopefully, that will be coming to your council at some point in time in the near future, and I look forward to continuing to work with your team here. I think you've got a really good city, at least from a fiscal perspective, that you've run really well.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. It's really good news because we went from not mowing grass in my recent memory to where we are now. So it is really nice. And there's a lot of people that were involved in getting us where we're here. It's not like, you know, those up, all of us up here, we just made that happen. There was people that were on this council before that probably were involved, decisions that got us where we're at now, and there was other staff, and there was, you know, other city managers, and there's other people that all probably contributed in some way or another. So but the good news is we've gotten to a point where I think, you know, knock on wood, that we're doing okay. And I do look forward to seeing those Measure Q numbers for sure, because, you know, when we were, when we were looking at Measure Q initially, you know, we were forecasting like 3-point something million, and then it was like, oh, it's going to be more like 3.8. It's like, well, it actually might be 4. And so now it looks like it's more than 4. So I really am interested when you guys get those forecasts done, to what Measure Q is really looking like. Because Parks and Rec is near and dear to my heart, and that money is committed to that purpose right now, so I'm looking forward to that. Either council got questions for Andy or comments? So, good job, Carly. I know, look, it's a big shoes to step into a finance position and have to fill that role, and so thank you for your hard work, and thank you, Andy, for helping her.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Carly, for your report. There is, just for the clarification for the public, if you look at the page two on the staff report, can you might be explain total asset increase by 7.4%? You know, that four lines.
Mm-hmm.
Asset increase, asset decrease, then revenue increase. Andy, can you might be a little bit explain to the public how it increase and decrease?
Um...
See, it was the asset increase, 7.4%.
Right. Yeah, kind of for the same reasons that I went over in the report. All of those revenues and expenditures caused that increase.
And then the next is liability decrease. What reason the liability decrease for 2.4%?
Yeah, that one, I had noted there that that was primarily due to the net impact of the debt paydown and decreased pension and OPEB commitments. So every year, pension and OPEB has an actuarial report, and those affect the liabilities quite a bit. So that was the reason for that decrease in the liabilities.
Thank you. The next line is total revenue increase at 22.2%.
Mm-hmm. That one's primarily due to increases in sales tax, charges for services, and then some intergovernmental revenue that we had.
Does that include Measure Q or no?
Sales tax, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be, yeah.
Yeah.
So that means sale tax come from the local businesses, right?
Right.
Thank you. And then expenditure increase and also cost increase. Can you might be explain a little bit?
Yeah, that one I had noted for increased spending on capital projects. So some of the projects that we have completed in the city that...
So you maybe know which, which project?
Um...
Maybe John or...
I can take a look. I might have some notes.
Oh, if he's not right now, give me back. That's okay.
Okay.
And if you look at the page number three, just for the, for the public information, general fund, right? And this general fund is total is 29 million, right?
Mm-hmm.
Can you might be explain all the general fund, what that mean? Non-spendable restriction, all these lines? Can you might be...
Sure, I can go back to this line. I turn it on.
I believe the report has those definitions in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I like to explain to the public.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want me to go through these categories, or you want me to read what's in...
Basically, what that mean is...
What the meaning of the categories is? Okay. So the non-spendable is what we have noted for prepaid and inventory, so that's typically like events that we prepay for at the end of the fiscal year. Inventory is like postage and fuel. Those are accounted for in that number. Restricted fund balances have external restrictions imposed on them by creditors, granters, contributors, laws, regulations, or anything which is require the resources to be used for specific purposes. Committed fund balance classification includes amounts that can be used only for specific purposes determined by formal action by city council. So in our case, that's the rainy day fund, what we call the economic stability reserve. Assigned fund balances are amounts constrained by the city's intent to be used for specific purposes, but are neither restricted or committed. So those we have encumbrances at the year, at the end of the year, compensated absences, those type of things. And then unassigned fund balance represents residual amounts that have not been restricted, committed, or assigned. This includes residual general fund balances, residual deficits, if any, in governmental funds. And as we have noted up there, it's Measure Q and remaining ARPA funds.
How much of that 19 million is ARPA, do you think, roughly?
ARPA is, I think it's about 1.5.
So 18 million of that is Measure Q.
No, 3.5 is Measure Q.
Yeah, what does it mean by, oh, unassigned including Measure Q? Okay.
Yeah.
My bad. So the unassigned, specify that again, the unassigned would be like, give me an example of unassigned, like...
It's basically anything that's not in those other categories. Yeah.
Well, then maybe...
Money we've made that we haven't spent yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to add to that a little bit, each one of these designations of a type of reserve is actually on the asset side of the balance sheet as well. It's either cash, it's cash you have in the bank, or it's accounts receivable. It's something that's going to be received and needed to be accrued. Sales tax, it's received after the period. But it's liquid, okay? Essentially, every one of these reserves is a liquid reserve on the other side of the balance sheet. And Carly went through and, you know, depicted each one of these reserves well, and you just have to assign them this way. The only other thing I would call out is committed reserves pretty much can only be used under your authority. So they have to, it has to come back to the council to use those. And then assigned reserves are typically policy items where you have money set aside pursuant to policy for things like a capital replacement reserve or deferred maintenance or something like that, so.
And the 6.9 million, just remind us for the new council members and for the public, that our policy for our rainy day fund is 20%, is that correct?
It's 25% of expenditures in the general fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund.
Right. So it's 25% of the general fund, '01, and Parks and Rec, '06.
Yeah.
Those, yeah. And that's only for like catastrophes, more or less. I mean, I mean, we went through a budget crisis, then we went through COVID, and we never touched that money, so I'm not really sure what we'd use it for. I guess I shouldn't jinx this comment, but...
All right, thank you, Carly.
All right. Thank you, Carly.
You're welcome.
Yeah, do we have any public comment on this particular item?
Harry Wenzel?
Of course, Harry. I was like, of course, Harry's gonna talk about this.
Council members, thank you again. Harry Wenzel, here for his annual discussion about the ACFER. And I think the staff has done a great job this year, and I'm glad to see that we have Andy here. So, with that said, I really think that the ACFER deserves a forum of some sort. I mean, go ahead and pass it tonight. It's already, what are we, seven months past the end of the year, closing in on eight? I don't think that really matters. But I think that there may be an interest by people other than myself as to, you know, what is in the ACFER? It's a very complicated document. And so, maybe come into the modern age and say, you know, I mean, we are independent here in Galt. And maybe there's something more simplified we could put together so that when somebody looks at their tax bill, they say, oh, yeah, that's over there in revenue. Where they look at their gas receipt, oh, yeah, there's a hidden tax in there, but we benefit from that. Or when they pay their, you know, whatever, when they pay their solid waste bill, or their sewer bill, or whatever, where does that go, and how does that fit into the budget? And it might be a little more exciting, but I know these things are not the most exciting. It takes people like Andy and Carly to do these kinds of jobs, because they are grueling, I guarantee it. I did it for a while, and I was never so glad to get into something else. So I'm gonna bring the subject up that I had last year, which is the solid waste. And I'm glad Andy's here. Maybe he can take a look at it. But my concern was, if you look at the, let's see if I can get my paper out here. If you look at the government-wide financial, and you go down to solid waste, you'll see there's $4,141,000 in expense. So I guess the first question is, is that the amount of money that after we collected all of the solid waste bills, that's what we wrote a check to Cal Waste for? Or is there something else in there? And then when you go up above, you see 22,866. And everything we collected, I suppose, goes there. But there is also a franchise fee, and it would be interesting to know where that went. What I was a little more adamant about last year was that I think we're missing putting the revenue for the commercial and industrial that's collected by Cal Waste. I think it should be treated the same way that we're treating those amounts that we collect from the citizens. And so, and then maybe Andy can take a look at the contract, or not the contract, but the amendment to the 2018 contract. And I had a little bit of a discussion with the council there. And I'm sure you guys still disagree with me, but that transfer station is free. And whether we net that transaction, or should we show that gross? Is that better reporting to our citizens that, okay, we got a transfer station, and in theory, we charge them, I think it was 70 or 80,000 dollars, them being Cal Waste, and then we pay them back, and that was in return for reducing the bill that people get for their solid waste? And so just the whole handling of, I know we reduced the franchise fee, and we had a lot of things moving around. Just that we're handling that right. I'm glad that, I think the discussion was really good tonight. And I guess one of the things, I kind of challenged Matt Boring before he fled, I guess, to Manteca, was that maybe there should be, just out of interest, if you were to take all of the fund balances and match them back against Sean Farrell's report, and just get a grasp that when you have a fund balance, that's cash, that's part of the pooled cash. But the question that was asked, I think Mr. Farmer asked it about, well, what about the Measure Q money? Where is that? I think that that would be resolved. But I think that if we understand that, that's pooled cash. Like Parks and Rec has zero pooled cash. And then finally, another item that I'd like to see would be when we talk about the fixed assets. I would really like to see a listing of all of the city-owned property. What we bought it for, what it's been depreciated at, what the net is that goes into that figure, and then also some kind of an idea of what the market value is of that property. So those are my comments. Things are going really good, I think. And again, thank you to everybody, and to staff. They're doing a good job. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. So in regards to Mr. Wenzel's, don't we get in our, either in our budget, at what point we are seeing the assets of what, like the property, everything from like equipment to actual property that we own, we see all that. I've seen those in reports. What report does that come in to us?
There is a schedule in the ACFER for capital assets.
There is a schedule in there, okay. What schedule, does there a number associated with it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Note 5, page 60. It doesn't break it down in great detail, but it does have all the categories of land or infrastructure.
But it does break it down to like land, and then other assets, which means like equipment. Does it get down to like the, like for trucks and...
Right. It doesn't tell us what property we purchased. Yes, it's in there.
And just to answer, well, this is really to answer it, but Mr. Wenzel brought up the commercial and industrial collection, the money that, he was, he made some mention about the money that Cal Waste collects industrial and resi... I just repeated that. But that money, so those accounts, and John, I don't know if you're aware of this. I know Mike Salling was a little more, because he was privy to those meetings and he was in those. But maybe you can answer this, or maybe you can't. But that money, and maybe Chris, you know this too. Those accounts between Cal Waste and commercial or industrial users don't flow through the city. The city doesn't collect that money and then pay Cal Waste like it does with residential. That money goes directly from those users right to Cal Waste. That's why the city's not involved in that. Isn't that correct, Chris?
That's, I would have to look to double check, because I don't want to say anything that's incorrect. But I do believe that is correct.
Because like, I'm a commercial user in my business. I pay Cal Waste directly.
Yes, I know we do all the billing for residential.
We don't pay the city of Galt a bill, and then turn, the city of Galt hands that money over on the commercial industrial side.
Yeah.
And then, and then, and I don't know if you can answer this tonight, but maybe you could get back to the council on the other question he asked about the solid waste. He pointed out a number of 4.1 million, roughly. He assumed that's what we collected from Cal Waste. I'm just curious if there is something in the, if there is something you can say how much money we did collect from, or I'm sorry, how much we paid them, not how much we collected, I'm sorry. So there's amount of money that we collect through solid, for solid waste, like we bill customers for waste services. And then there's a check we write to Cal Waste. I think Mr. Wenzel was asking for that somehow.
Okay.
I think if we just got a breakdown of what the expenditures were under that solid waste line item, I think that would, that would cover that, plus we'd be able to see where all the rest of that money went.
So maybe if you could just provide that to us at some point in the near future, and then we can pass it on to Mr. Wenzel too?
Sure.
Or we can make it available to public or something, so that would be great.
Okay.
I do want to point out something interesting. It's like, watching, going through, like, how many of these that Paul and I have seen so far, you know, it started out as the CAFR, now it's the ACFR, because they changed the acronym. But, you know, you go from a budget where it's like, very just, you know, very broad stroke, like here's the numbers, and people can understand it, because it's kind of just very generic. And then you always have people who's like, well, it doesn't show much breakdown, it's not very transparent. We need to see breakdowns and line items so we can see exactly where the money's going. And then you see the next report that comes out the next time, and it's like super detailed, and it's like super complicated to understand. And then we go back to the one that's not so complicated, so people can understand. And I feel like we keep seeing that cycle. I don't know, it's just me. But I think Carrie knows what I'm talking about. Yes. So, you have a public comment, Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Do you have a speaker, well, you can come up to the dais. You don't need to fill out a speaker card again. We're trying to get through this meeting quickly.
I'd like to bring up the flea market losing a lot of revenue because of a lot of empty spaces. Basically, a lot of customers complained there's no parking, because 70 vendors are parked in the parking lot. A lot of people aren't coming, because, you know, especially after 10 o'clock. The wholesale vendors are dwindling. I work for a wholesale vendor that has 10 spaces, and his neighbor has 10 spaces. Business has been bad the last three months. Sometimes I have to wait a week to get paid, because he didn't make any money. And they're talking about dropping out of the flea market. More advertising is needed to boost the wholesale vendors. And basically, to get more people there. Maybe if we can, if we can get a shuttle bus, that would bring the elderly and the older Hispanic people, giving them more independence to come to the flea market. And, you know, because a lot of people come on the 99 Express from Lodi. They ride the bus to get their produce and everything. So, you know, we need to boost the sales, because everybody's talking, the wholesalers are talking about not coming pretty soon, because they can't keep on losing money month after month.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I actually think the graph that showed us that revenues were up, I mean, not to say that anything that Mr. Lee, that you said is not true, but I also would point out that I think the last three months of weather haven't been very conducive for flea market business, so hopefully that'll change come springtime. I do know that when there's a holiday in the market, there's a holiday that falls on market, that place is hopping, and you can't even drive in that part of town. It's crazy, so. Anyways, hopefully things will get better as we go into the spring. Where are we at with all this? Andy, are you finished? We're all done with your presentation? You had questions, you're done. Does anybody have any other questions for Andy or Carly? No? Okay. And I think we have some direction on a couple of things we wanted to see, just in the near future. If you could show us some numbers. I don't have any additional questions. Again, thank you. And so with that, I'm looking for a, someone to make a motion to accept the comprehensive finance report from fiscal year ending June 30th of 2024, the auditor's report, the independent accountant's report, the appropriations limit, the independent auditors' report on compliance, and the compliance regarding AB 3773, for year ending June 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reed. Can I have a real call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Motion is approved, five to zero. Next up, we were, well, next up, we were gonna see this great presentation by the police department, but I don't know if we have time now, so we're just gonna take these brochures home.
Unfortunately, Mayor, I guessed 10:15, so buckle in, okay?
All right. So next up, we have from the police department, we have the Galt Police Department Annual Report by our prestigious Chief Kalanowski. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you is a hard copy presentation of our annual report. And staff will get the electronic version on our website in the coming weeks. This just came off the press this afternoon, and I do want to thank Express Type and Graphics for their work to get it out the door, so we could present here this evening. Also, the work that you see in this book is, you know, I gave my vision of what I'd like us to see, but everything you see in here is work done by the staff, and the pride that the staff takes in the organization, and the work that they did this past year. Primarily Corporal Mike Little, you know, he is our graphic artist and photographer, and everything else we ask him to do. And then my key staff with my administration, and Valerie Hyman. And then the names of the people in each of these pages, sergeants and supervisors, provided the dialogue for this report. So with that, I just want to start by saying we're gonna skip some pages. I was joking about 10:15. So we will go to page... Can't miss, oh, come on, baby. Message from the chief. So we'll cut to the chase and tell you that, as you know, because you've made these appropriations through requests we've made here at council, this year we prioritize the adoption of advanced technologies, including the implementation of a real-time communication platform to leverage data analytics. And we're committed to using modern tools to protect and serve the residents of Galt. And I'll talk more about those tools that we implemented this last year. And I want to reiterate that the members of the Galt Police Department work tirelessly to provide quality services, and that is reflective of the work that they do each and every day. And I can't be more proud of the work they do. I'm very protective of the organization. And they are very tolerant of my request when we push on different issues that come to council, and have responded accordingly, and so I thank each and every member. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the Galt community, and that you being the council, and the community for allowing us the privilege of serving them. We will go to our team, which is basically the new hires that we had. You see a list of new hires. I won't go through those, but those are reflective of five officers and three dispatchers and one CSO we onboarded. We are fully staffed in dispatch, and we have four current openings for the rank of police officer. The only openings we have are for those four officers in the department out of 58 or 59 total employees. So we're doing well. During the year, we promoted two sergeants, Young Hammack and Anthony Castaneda. Those are our two new supervisors. And we lost some folks due to retirement. We lost Rod Fisher as a sergeant, although he's doing some pretty background work for us. And then the illustrious Armando Solis.
What?
For many decades, served the Galt Police Department as a reserve police officer. I'll save the stories, as that'll be for his roast on Thursday. But nonetheless, Armando decided it was time to drink more wine and travel, I guess. So we thank Armando for his service. And then Corporal Little, was Officer Little at the time, and had K-9 Kane. Served for six and a half years. We'll talk about that in a minute. But Kane retired, and is living his best life with Corporal Little. So that's what we have on that. More pictures, because they're always good. We'll skip that, because I'm on there. So let's get to the nuts and bolts. Our crime stats overview. First, I want to acknowledge the fact that we had a 57% increase in traffic stops this last year. We heard, and you hear often, about traffic complaints in the community. We hear it on the regular. Every community hears it, whether it's around the schools, or, you know, high-traffic areas. Construction also complicates traffic circulation. But staff worked hard to increase the traffic stops. And with that, we also had a 21% increase in arrests that we made this past year. So going through some of these numbers, you can see that we were up slightly in total incidents, although our calls for service were down. Our officer-initiated activities made up the difference. So overall, we were up for the activity for the police department. Again, nearly 4,000 traffic stops conducted, 480 misdemeanor arrests, 188 felony arrests, and 211 of those misdemeanor arrests will be criminal citations that we issued. Looking forward, you could see, whoops, let's back up, got a little excited there. No homicides reported last year. We recorded eight rapes, two statutory rapes. Robberies were steady at 16. Aggravated assaults were down from 95 to 77. Simple assault was up slightly from 180 to 191. Burgs were down by 16, from 60 to 44. And then larceny had a pretty decent drop from 331 to 282, although we had more vehicles stolen during the year. You see two years here. Usually, we try to give you a three-year run, but those of you who have been here know that we moved to neighbors reporting, and it captures information and categories differently. And so, and not trying to give you a financial report and confuse everybody, we try to keep it simple. By the way, I'm glad to hear that we have lots of money in the city, because my staff is eager to help you spend some of that. I should have led with that, city manager. I'm sorry, I didn't. Oh, I should have. I'll pay for that dearly, I'm sure. In our professional standards area, last year, we had 29 uses of force. Zero use of force were outside of our policy. We had 13 vehicle pursuits. All were within policy. We received 14 compliances that are either internally generated from, you know, command staff and others, or externally generated, and five of those were sustained complaints, and appropriate action was taken on those. We were closely with HR, our BBK, and the city manager on those issues. And then I would indicate, and folks will see this when we bring it up on the website, that there is a link if you want to look at our clearances and other activities, and that's updated regularly. So that is some transparency issues for you. Moving to the traffic unit, again, it's near and dear to everybody. I just want to highlight that we combine enforcement, education, and data-driven strategies to reduce collisions and... and improve the overall safety of Galt's roadways. That is the goal. Last year, we had a hundred and twelve DUI arrests, three hundred and forty-two vehicles were towed for various reasons, a large majority of those are gonna be parked vehicles. So our traffic collisions were down slightly, you could see that's, it bounces back and forth from two seventy to two eighty, we're down to two sixty-three. Our hit-and-runs were down slightly, property damage only, those are gonna be a lot of parking lot incidents, those were off a couple. Injury collisions were down a little bit, minor injuries were slightly down, major injuries down. And these minor and major injuries, there could be one accident with multiple victims, so that's how those are counted, that doesn't mean thirty-eight different accidents occurred with those, or six different accidents occurred with majors. No fatals last year, we were up in DUI collisions, which is interesting, because we were up in a DUI arrest in enforcement, but nonetheless, that's our realities. Total citations were four hundred and fifty-three, of those, seven hundred and ninety-five were actual moving violations. So those are the activities of the department, that all falls under, quote, "the traffic unit," run by Sergeant Hammack, but it's all of the patrol deployment that is engaging and participating and creating those numbers and activities for us. Am I saying it right there, Officer Valdez? Everything's good? All right. So moving along, drugs seized, this just gives you an idea of our prescription medications turned in, we do that a couple times a year with the DEA, so nearly five hundred pounds were turned in. And then if you look at the percentage of drugs that we seize, you see fentanyl rivals at forty-two point six percent, the methamphetamine, the drug of choice, at forty-nine percent, and then others are gonna be your heroin and other type drugs here. So the two main ones in Galt are that meth and fentanyl. And you're aware, very acutely aware of that, based on our efforts with lifesaving activities and the work done by the Attorney's Office with the Fentanyl Task Force, and the information we get from the Coroner's Office. And there's actually been a reduction in those activities, so that's nice to see. And I did it twice again, let's see if I missed it. Okay, comm center. The comm center took in nearly thirty thousand calls. Nine-one-one calls were twenty-six point seven percent of our activity, and ninety-four percent of our calls were answered within ten seconds, which is our goal. So they continue to do an excellent work in there. We did a lot, as you know, because you appropriated those funds, did a lot of work to upgrade that comm center with new workstations, monitors, we talked about some new technology we did, a lot of efforts to support the dispatch crew this past year. Then on to youth services, which I know the mayor was, it's near and dear to his heart and other council members, of course, but we created formerly a youth services unit, acting, or not even acting, because that sounds bad, but working as our SRO program. So we have Kyle Slater, who's our youth services sergeant, and then we have two officers assigned to that unit, and they work with the schools, and you've heard of the work that they've done, both at the high school level and in the elementary district. And that third officer, being Kyle Slater, and being able to provide some oversight and some better interaction with the superintendents, has been critical in the improvement of services we've been able to deliver to the school districts this past year. In addition, Sergeant Slater also oversees the volunteer program and our explorers and our CSOs. And as you know, our CSOs, explorers come from the schools, and our CSOs work closely in partnership with our SROs in delivering community outreach, which has a lot to do with our schools. And then our CAPS volunteers do a lot of work supporting the department. The CSOs do everything from traffic control to evidence collection and report writing. They do our national night out, community toy drive, and coffee with a cop, and any other creative endeavor we come up with. They've done a great job in that regard. So we'll move over to graffiti, you see we had two hundred and fifty cases, this is only a measure of our cost, that's only the focus of the police department, there's other costs that occur with, with the general fund, but that's a seventeen thousand dollar cost. Twenty-nine hundred and thirty-four volunteer hours with the CAPS, four hundred and fifty-nine with our explorers last year. K-9 unit, we're down to Officer Spinelli and his dog, because we lost Kane to retirement as we transitioned Officer Little into his assignment as corporal. He had six and a half years with us, was having some medical issues anyways, so the time was near for his transition, and Mike successfully tested for and was given the corporal position. So now he serves as an FTO and an officer in charge when we do not have a supervisor like our other corporals do. But I wanted to highlight that he was responsible, he was deployed two hundred and fifty times, responsible for a hundred and forty-five arrests, and located eighty-seven suspects in his tenure. So great work on his part, and we'll talk more on Thursday at our awards ceremony about that. Is it ten fifteen yet, City Manager? We're almost done, I promise. Problem oriented policing is run by Diego Ochoa, our officer assigned, and Christine, our mental health county employee that comes down two days a week, they address quality of life matters. Diego's been doing it, I'm gonna say six months, and then somebody's gonna tell me it was a year, but he's done it for a minute for us. But I would tell you that probably over the last six to eight months, we've seen a lot less, we see the homeless, but we've seen a lot of less activity regarding, you know, more aggressive homeless activities, and that goes to the work that Diego has done with Christine, and staying on top of those encampments and getting folks moved and working with Caltrans and the railroad and everybody else to make, make them move and not set up shop. So a lot of good work there from that group. And then as we round out the work, Anthony Castaneda, our sergeant in charge of the bike unit, which has four members. The UAS unit, whoops, I'm so excited. The UAS unit had fifty-nine flights for fifty-nine hours last year, and they just onboarded two new pilots, are doing their training as we speak. And I'm in deep discussions with the City Manager about helping him spend some of his money related to a drone as first responder program, which I hope to bring back to you at the budget build. Elk Grove has this program, they actually have three drones, but the direct effect of that drone as a first responder being overhead as a force multiplier helps with officer safety, perimeter security, and as of about three weeks ago, has cleared nineteen percent of the calls in Elk Grove, not requiring an officer response. So oftentimes, we get a lot of calls that, hey, there's debris in the roadway and different things like that, and sending up the drone, you know, there's a lot of good Samaritans clear the roadway on our behalf, is one example, but there's a lot of work that they do, could check areas for suspicious subjects and different things like that. And so that has been a benefit to Elk Grove, and because we're part of their ARTIQ, their Real-Time Information Center, we believe there is some strategies for that in the future to alleviate the need for future staff, not exclusively eliminating future staff, but lowering the need for some additional staff by the use of drones as first responders. And the reality is, that is becoming the industry norm. So we'll bring more back to you on that as one of our targeted programs for next year. And then lastly, if I haven't bored you to death yet enough, going back to our technology improvements, obviously you're aware, we didn't put this in here, but you're aware of Star Chase, which is GPS deployment, DARTs, that we can adhere to vehicles from our patrol vehicles as a way to help monitor the movement of vehicles without, you know, I guess, in attempt to lower the vehicle pursuits and the duration of vehicle pursuits. And so we have that technology that we've deployed. Peregrine is a technology that we started this last year, and it's basically brings in our technologies with Axon and the body-worn cameras, our computer-aided dispatch, and other programs that we use through the county. It's just a clearinghouse of information, and so when we're trying to figure out where Chris Arias has been, and if he's been issued any citations anywhere, this is just a hypothetical, of course, we could see that activity in neighboring jurisdictions. So when we're trying to find people or figure out who they've been with or what they drive and different things like that, it's been very helpful for, for us, and we, we think that's a good platform going forward. The Prepared nine-one-one is an AI-based platform that's essentially mimicking the call as it's being given to the dispatcher. And as you know, when, in times of crisis, multiple nine-one-one calls are coming in, and I could be down to only one dispatcher in that comm center working, so things do get missed. But that AI system picks up that conversation and allows the dispatcher to go back at the end of the call and clarify or get information that he or she may have missed in the call-taking, and ensure that the officers get that provided to them in the field. And it's actually been a great training tool for our dispatch center, too. And then we are going to be moving to an automated non-emergency triage, which is IA-based, and we're working with Prepared nine-one-one on that. That AI world is evolving quickly and is the future of the comm centers, and we wanted to be an early adopter on that based on the number of staff that we have in that comm center, and that is a way to help supplement that staffing there. And then last but not least, you saw, you know, additional citations and traffic stops, but we went to e-citations with crossroads. Most of this was covered by a grant we received from the state, but now all citations are issued electronically from the officer's phone, which allows a quicker upload to the courts, and they're still working some of those issues out. The goal is to be, you know, paperless, and we are currently, but allows the citations to be issued, and it allows for, frankly, less errors to be made and more clearer, you know, digits and name spelling and other things that could happen when you're writing, you know, something in the rain at three o'clock in the morning, as an example. So that's what we've done with technology, and that's where we're at on Thursday. Well, I'll say more about that in a minute, but on Thursday, we'll have the awards ceremony, that'll be reflective of the good work that the members of the organization did. And I do want to thank the previous council and the current members that are here now for your continued support of the organization. It is the members of this organization that do the work for the city. I set the table, but they do the work, and, and to every person in the organization, they do excellent work, and I'm proud of each and every one of them. So that's all I have for you, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We're not gonna make ten fifteen, but my over-under is way off, so.
I actually have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions. Not, not, because I want to say later, but I was curious on some of the statistics, I just wanted to dive in a little bit.
Okay.
The motor vehicle thefts, does that include vehicles that are reported, stolen from here in Galt, or does it also include when you pull someone over, because flock caught it and?
No, that's gonna be reported stolen vehicles that we've had here.
From here?
Yes.
Okay. So, so actually, the number would be greater if it were ones that we just, or that you guys pulled over and?
Yes, ma'am.
The thirteen vehicle pursuits, did they, were they originated here?
Yes, they were pursuits that the Galt, members of the Galt Police Department were involved in. I don't have the specifics of all of them, they can be pursuits that we were asked to participate in, and based on the severity of the reason for the pursuit, we could participate with allied agencies in that apprehension, but those are thirteen pursuits that we were actively involved in during the year.
Okay. And just a great job for the DUI arrests, that's, I mean, not great that we have them here, but I'm glad that PD is on top of that, you guys do a wonderful job. And I just curious, three hundred and forty-two towed vehicles, where do they go, and how long are they staying?
So they'll go to our contracted tow yards in town, they have to be vendors in town. So they'll go to the tow yards, and they could be, you know, generally, we get a lot of towed vehicles for vehicles parked too long in a neighborhood, we get these complaints a lot, and so we mark these cars, and they've been dumped by whomever, low-value vehicles and different things, and they get towed. The length of that, how, how long they're hold, held, I don't know, because once they go to the tow company, it's between them and the tow company, will offer a release if that's necessary, but that's the only thing that we do in that regard, once it's towed.
So if they're truly abandoned and they get towed and they're sitting at that yard, who becomes the owner?
The tow yard, and then Alene Salem. Yes.
Thank you.
I don't really have a question so much as just a couple of comments, I was really happy to see, you know, a huge increase in the traffic stops. Obviously, as you stated, Chief, one of the number one complaints we always hear in our small town, because we don't have lots of homicides and serious crime, but we have traffic stuff, that's like a big topic, right? So I'm very happy to see that many traffic stops, because that is a number one concern most people. And along with that, seeing the, you know, the officer, the calls to service went down, but the officer-initiated number went, went way up. I mean, it's almost double from what it was two years ago. So I mean, it's just, the way I read that is, you guys are being really proactive, so that's, that's awesome. It's a great presentation. My question is, is this, is there any way this could be put online so the public could see it?
Yeah, we're gonna put it on our website, I mean, it's, that's, literally, we got it at four-thirty today, so.
Yeah, because this would be, this would be great for the public to see this, would love it to see that, so. Council, anybody have any comments or questions for Chief before he?
I do. Well, one thing, you took my thunder, I was gonna talk about the, about the traffic stops, too, because, I mean, that, we hear it day in, day out, all over Facebook, the police department's not doing it enough to, you know, do this, and we got hard numbers now that say likewise.
Right.
So if you're listening or watching this, look at the report, they're doing everything that they can to try to stop these people from speeding in your neighborhoods and running these stop signs and everything else, and this is the proof. My couple of questions were, on the, on the drugs, the seizing of the drugs, is it possible for us to get numbers instead of percentages? Because, you know, fifty-seven percent of two pounds is one pound, but at fifty-seven percent of twenty pounds is ten pounds, is a big difference.
Right. Yes, I, we can, and we've gone back and forth on that, because I think one year we did ounces, and then we said, let's do percentages so folks can see the difference. So I can provide that to you, you know, separately, number one, and then we can look at that next year when we're building the report.
Sure. And then the, the percentage, the, if anybody doesn't know, I wasn't a nine-one-one dispatcher, so that kind of hits a little home for me. The goal is ninety percent, right?
Yes.
So just to show you how well they're doing, it's not, almost ninety-five percent, some of the times when there's very little dispatchers in there. And I worked in dispatch centers that were much larger than that, and it was hard to get that ninety, that ninety percent. So them getting ninety-two, ninety-four point two is actually very, very good, so I wanted to point that out. And then the last couple of things, how long does it take to train the replacement canine?
The replacement canine will be, oh, you're gonna ask, pepper me with that question, huh? So I felt like I answered that in an email, I just don't remember what I told you.
I don't.
I'm gonna have to come back to you on that. And the reason why we have not put that job out to the department for full transparency is we're looking at a different canine trainer, and what I don't want to do is train with the new canine, or the old canine trainer, or the one we're using now, and then flip, so we want to get that settled before we open it up to the department. So, yeah. I'm surprised Mike Little hasn't typed, texted me right now to tell me, but anyways, I can get back to you on that. It's like ten or twelve weeks, something like that.
He's asleep.
Yeah.
And then the last thing, the first responder drone, is that the one that we've seen all on the TV where, like, the dispatcher, like, launches it and they control it from the dispatch center and it goes all throughout the city to?
Yeah, the drone will go, it's launched off a rooftop, and it will go to the scene direct, and then once it arrives on scene, it can be taken over by a dispatcher or somebody in the ARTIQ, which is not a dispatcher, but, you know, ARTIQ employees, in this case, Elk Grove, and can provide that aerial support. So when you're checking a creek bed or different things like that, that really allows you to do that. And we do that with the drones that we have, but those folks are in cars, have to get out of the car. Excuse me, once the coordinates are entered into the call for dispatch, that drone goes up and it's gone. And so as this gets warmer, and if sanctioned, I'm probably gonna get sanctioned, but if sanctioned through the City Manager, that that's a product we want to move forward on, you know, we could take an opportunity to have council members do some visits to the ARTIQ in Elk Grove and see what, exactly how that operates for you.
That's all I have. I forgot to mention one thing, the only thing I had a problem with this whole report was the part about somebody, Mr. Solis retired, hold on, let me find that.
Yeah.
Who allowed that?
What is that? You get rusty, is that what it is? They never called you for backup, so you said, might as well just retire, I guess, they never called me.
Too old, too fat to chase anybody.
Too many grandkids.
Yeah.
I honestly thought that you did, you retired from that a long time ago, I didn't even know that you were still.
So did the chief, that's why I had to resign.
I never pushed on you.
Carly called Chief. Carly called Chief and said, there's a number in here for somebody being paid. They should have retired. I'm like, what is this? All right. No more questions for the chief? All right. All right, Chief, thank you again. Very good presentation. Always good to see. Can't wait for that to get out in the public. It's awesome. Thanks to Express Type and Graphics, beautiful, and to Mike for doing all the design work on that. It's great work. And so, moving on with our, looking at 10:15 here. We're not going to make it, Chief. It's going to be before that. You're going to be off. All right, communication. Do we have any communication, Mr. City Manager?
None this evening.
All right, city clerks report. Do we have any of that?
None.
All right, comments by staff?
We do have a couple. Before I turn it over to staff, I just want to inform council, I think you know, you know, we're out with a recruitment for our finance director that closed this past Friday. And we have a lot of good candidates. Unfortunately, one of the candidates is not the current interim director. She had chose not to apply for the position. But I do want to thank Carly for stepping up, and I think she's done a fabulous job as the interim director. So, soon as we go through the recruitment process, we will have a new finance director. But I am excited about the candidates that we have.
Good, good news.
So, to provide some brief comments, I'll start with Chief Kalinowski.
I'm sure that doesn't want me to talk anymore. Two events that are this week, I just remind council about. Thursday, at 1 o'clock at the Littleton will be our awards ceremony. And at 3 o'clock, we will have the Harmender Graywall Memorial unveiled. And I want to give a shout-out to Armando and his people. They did a fabulous job pulling that all together. It's remarkable. I think you'll be proud of it, and I know I am. So, that will also be on Thursday. And I want to echo what Chris said. Carly's done an amazing job. We're trying to delay the recruitment, so she has to keep doing it, but it's been good to work with her. So, thank you.
Following, Chief, we'll have interim community development director Amy Mendez.
Good evening. Briefly, just wanted to publicly congratulate Postosa by Lucia, who was recently named in the top 100 places to eat on Yelp in the country. And so, yeah, they were number 36 out of 100 on the list in the nation. I know. It was published in the paper, and we had received the information through the SAC Business Journal last week. So, yes, congratulations to them. We will be recognizing them on social media. We're putting together a little reel through our community engagement analyst. So, that will be next week. Also, just briefly, wanted to remind folks, everybody should have received an invitation for the Bay City Electric grand opening. We have, I believe, an updated invitation I'll send that has a breakdown on the open house and the luncheon. So you have that information in case.
When is that?
It's on March 13th. It's a Thursday. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
I'll tell you, you haven't lived until you had their bacon cheeseburger ravioli. It is just outstanding. And next up is Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you of our first Saturday market. It will be held Saturday, March 1st. Believe it or not, it's already coming up. So, in a few weeks, hope to see you guys out there. Hopefully, no rain. And go from there.
And before we leave, I do want to thank the chief and the police department for the work that they have done. I love the friendly banter we have as a group. And it's always awesome when you can combine that culture that you've created with great service. And the city is in good position. And we sell a lot of homes to families because it's a safe city. And you guys deserve the credit for that. And that's it from.
All right. Thank you, sir. Comments by council and future agenda items, Mr. Pratton.
Day, so I'm done.
All right, Mr. Reed.
Thank you for everybody staying as late as we are. It's not 10:15, but it's close. The future agenda items, I still want to bring back the, I know we've had a discussion about the fire department giving their overview. I've talked about it a couple of times, and so, and I know that's been in conversation, so I'm not letting it go. But other than that, I want to go home just as much as everybody else.
Just real quick on that, I mean, we don't want to, I know we're not supposed to comment, but I did meet with the chief and the new general manager, and we're working on bringing that to council.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I don't have a lot, but I have one more question. I don't know if it's the chief or the city manager. You mentioned that you've worked with Caltrans for cleanup homeless. Do we have a contract with them?
No, but it sounds like their model's changing. And so, we have some responsibility, certainly on the C Street and A Street corridor overpasses as we're doing the maintenance there, so we're responsible for that. We don't have any contract with, like, the park and ride and the associated areas. There's a number we call, and we get on the list, and then they work the corridor. So, we're just part of the bigger area, the district, I guess it is. There is no formal contract, but they do service upon request. It's just not as quick as we are.
So, Little Birdie told me that might be a good idea if we get, if we try to work on a contract with Caltrans to work with, or to clean the encampments. It's happening up and down the state, all over everyone, a lot of people. A lot of entities are taking advantage of contracts with them so that they can be a little bit quicker in response. Other than that, I just thank you, staff, for, really thank you because I sent out so many emails with so many questions. And so, thank you very much for all that work, just for that, after you did a whole presentation. So, I know our staff. I'm just so impressed, the further in we get. I'm so impressed with how knowledgeable and friendly staff has been throughout this whole thing. And then, I will apologize, especially to Mr. Griffin because he usually gets the brunt of it. But I realize you do so much. It's your fault. If you didn't do so much, I wouldn't have so many questions. But other than that, good night, everyone.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. First up, I wanted to, I was going to tell you after the meeting, but in case you haven't heard and kept it and pass it on, I will not be able to be really disappointed, but I need to go actually out of town Thursday and Friday up north for work. So, couldn't swing it. So, the vice mayor will be filling in at the awards.
Yes, I will.
At the Oscar grave. So please do mention to the department who are there that if they don't see me there, it's because I couldn't be, so. I want to thank all the people that spoke at Public Comment tonight. I know, you know, there's a lot of people there who are upset with some things that spoke. But, you know, it was always good to see people come to council meetings. Sometimes, the only thing that gets them here is when they're upset about something. But, you know, it is good to see people involved and see how things work in the city and be a part of that experience. So I just want to thank all the people that are watching online and people that are in the room still. Thank you for being here and watching, and for the people that left earlier that did speak. We do value your opinions, and we do listen when you speak. So, with that, other than that, I think it's been a good night. We made some maps, right? I mean, that's historic decisions. We're getting through that. Got good raviolis, got good police department. We got good money in the bank. It's a good night. So I'll adjourn at 9:59.
Good way to end it.